Could you please remain standing as I call on Mr. Gilz McDonald to lead us in a word of prayer?
Before we start, let's have a little moment of silence because there is something that's near to my heart. The people that died in the, you know, in the, yeah, overseas. And then it can happen to us anytime, we never can tell. So we need to pray for these people. So a little minute of silence. Let's pray. I want everybody to pray with me. Father, we thank you. We praise you. We honor you. In that congregation we are having here, we need you, Lord. We have to put you first in everything. Lord, touch our hearts. Join us together. Bind us together as a family. Strengthen us to speak the truth, to be in the truth at all times. Brothers and sisters, we are one. Forget about lies, but call upon God. Anytime we are honest, our prayers will work. Things will happen. So I need all of us to turn to the Lord and pray. Because what is happening in our country, it is not easy. It is dangerous. It is hurting. People are coming to me, you know, crying. So we need to pray. We need to call upon God. Let him make a difference and be honest with ourselves, with God, and everything will work well for us, in Jesus' name.
Thank you very much, Mr. McDonald. You may all be seated. And my understanding is now that we are streaming live. I would like to welcome those of you in the diaspora who are looking at this town hall meeting live, those of you in other parts of St. Lucia at home who are following us. We would like to welcome you and we do appreciate you joining us. Before we proceed, I would like to introduce the head table. Up here on the stage, we have Mrs. Nancy Charles, our mobilization officer. Mrs. Tasso Daniel, our welfare officer and chairperson of Swazell constituency branch. Our general secretary, Mrs. Janine Girodi-McIntyre. We have acting instead of our chairman today, Mrs. Fortuna Belarus. Your parliamentary representative, the honorable Bradley Felix. Deputy political leader, Senator Dominic Ferry. Deputy political leader, Guy Joseph. I would like to extend an apology on behalf of our political leader who is off island, but he has sent his best regards and love and he will be following. And ladies and gentlemen, as if you didn't know, I'm Spider. I would like to acknowledge further a number of people, important people to this party that are present here today. Some of them. I would like to acknowledge Ms. Agnes Gebatis, also known as Joanne from La Pointe. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Wesley Giamari from Industry. Ms. Rufina Felix of Ravino. Ms. Frederick McDonald of PI. And ladies and gentlemen, we would like to pay special tribute to some of our fallen soldiers, some of our stalwarts who are now departed. But we want to let it be known that they are still in our memory and we want to acknowledge them for the contribution they have made throughout their lives to this party. I would like to mention the deceased, Mrs. Joyce Lynn Popo from Industry. Mr. Nickelodeon Dilluis, also known as T-Sunny from Industry. Mr. Gilbert Isaac of Saltebus. And Ms. Francilla Springer of Saltebus. Now, ladies and gentlemen, before we go any further, let me just say this. I salute Swazell. You are not a monk. And I think you have set a good example for the rest of the country to follow. We shall follow. Ladies and gentlemen, an honorable constituency, Swazell. One of, I would have said the loveliest, but I'm from Grosley, so it's one of the loveliest places in St. Lucia. You know what? Let me call someone from your area to give you a warm Swazell welcome as I invite Mr. Henryx Rennie Watcher to give you that welcome.
Amai flabo! What sweat, what sweat! Amai flabo! A warm and delightful, delightful good evening to you! Today, we are in the capital of St. Lucia, if you want to call it. Capital of St. Lucia. I'll tell you why. Swazell is the place where you get all your crafts and your sweet potatoes. So, welcome to Swazell! Well, I am Henryx Rennie, better known as Watcher, the Butcher. You all know that already. We, the people of Swazell Saltebus, are extremely delighted to have so many of you all here today. I know you all travel from far. So again, I'm going to tell you, welcome and welcome to Swazell again. The Swazell Saltebus branch is proud to reel back honorable Bradley Felix, our parliamentary rep for a second consecutive term. We did so despite all the lies and propaganda that Labour Party sent across. Amidst our party's defeat, in July 2021, Bradley Felix emerged victorious and created history as the first UWB candidate to win back-to-back in Swazell. Today, we are proud to announce that Swazell is no lumber, no longer a Labour seat. It is a UWB stronghold right now. And it is going to be like this for many, many years to come. And tell them that, many, many years to come. We are prepared to take the responsibility to set the example for all the other constituencies to follow. We are prepared to do that. And as you can see from this organization tonight, you can see we are prepared for this. Amai flabo! This is the time to correct the wrongs and the mistakes that we did the last time. No more mistakes, no more wrongs. This is the time for us to come together and forget the past. Just forget the past. Let's come together and let us forget the past. We're going to have a new beginning. This is the time for all of us to come together irrespective of our real and imaginary differences. I said imaginary differences. Could be real too, but we need to come together and forget about this and let's get together. This is the time for all of us to come together and put our shoulders to the wheel. This is the time we must do that. This is the time when our party is calling us to put our shoulders together, to rally around our party leader, Alan Shastey, who is going to be the next prime minister of St. Lucia. And this is the time where we need to support his team as they prepare us with the plans and the strategies to get Labour out of office. All hands on deck, all hands on deck. Don't tell me when you're ready, you pull your backside over there and you pull it. No, all hands on deck. My brothers and sisters, do not let your heart be troubled. We are marching for victory. We are on the right path. And as you can see from all those town hall meetings, the attendants can tell you, we are in the right path. We are moving. We are in the right place and this is the right time. Amai flabo! Once again, welcome to Swazell. I thank you.
Thank you very much. That was Watcher, the farmer, the teacher, the butcher. For those of you who do not know the younger ones, he was once a UWB candidate. I think that was in 2011. That's correct. So it is nice to have all our stalwarts on board. In the past, you know, when we are in opposition, people scatter. But I notice everyone is coming together and we welcome all of you to be at home. I want to make a special appeal to the young people of St. Lucia to begin to rally with the United Workers' Party because that is where your future lies. And we are not a party of slogans and soundbites. We are a workers' party. And that is why whenever the United Workers' Party is in office, whenever we have the reins of government, you see development and progress and the youth of St. Lucia prospers. I omitted one stalwart that I want to now acknowledge. I want to acknowledge Ms. Rufina Simon of PI. A round of applause, please. And now that we have had our warm Swazell welcome, I would like to call on our first speaker to deliver some brief remarks and that is a youth. A what? A youth? Alright, I'd like to call on Ms. Kimberly Finley, the secretary of Swazell Saltebus constituency branch, to deliver some remarks.
Good night, everyone. Thank you, yes, the flames always. Mr. Spider forgot that I'm also the youth officer of Swazell Saltebus. I was appointed with this position and it's a privilege to take up this responsibility because I too have been working from 2016 till today and continuing as a young person. I started very, very young. And today, I don't just stand before you as a youth officer, but as a passionate advocate for the incredible potential that resides within our youth here in Swazell Saltebus, the land of the shabines. It is a privilege to address the youth, the heartbeat of our community, and share a vision of empowerment and change. Today, I'm so proud to see so many of young persons who are here at our town hall meeting. Give yourselves a round of applause. And yes, we do have those of you who are online viewing us. Thank you so much for rallying with us and supporting us. But first and foremost, I want to stress on the importance of embracing your political rights. Our democracy is built on the principle that every voice matters, regardless of age, regardless of your background. In fact, it is our young generation that holds the power to shape the future of our community. By engaging in political process, you can contribute to the decisions that affect your lives, your families, and your neighbors. One crucial aspect of political participation is the role you play in fostering a safe and nurturing environment for your fellow youth. We know what's happening right now, but it is your right, it is your responsibility. You are your brother's keeper to keep each other safe. We all share the same neighborhoods, the same schools, the same playing fields. Your involvement in politics can directly impact the safety and security of your community. You have the ability to influence policies that address issues like crime prevention, assess the quality of education and recreational opportunities. We have the land here. It's your opportunity now to bring forth your ideas to our rep, honorable Bradley Felix of What You Want. Do not sleep on your laurels. Stand up and say what you want in your constituency. By making the right decisions, you can create an atmosphere where every young person feels protected, valued, and empowered to pursue their dreams. Our youth are not just leaders of tomorrow. You are leaders of today, your life today. You are part of your generation that is ready, that is committed, that is determined, and to make a difference in our political environment. Your energy, you're young, your enthusiasm and fresh perspectives are a driving force behind positive change. It is our generation that will bring innovative solutions to the table, address pressing challenges, and shape the future of Swazell Saltebus. As members, you see them here today. We are all committed in fostering unity and progress within our communities. We recognize the immense potential of our youth and we are here to support and guide your every step of the way. So I encourage you to actively participate in the discussions, voice your concern, and work alongside us to build a brighter future. To conclude, because I don't want to stay here too long, the power to create a better tomorrow lies within each and every one of you. By expressing your political rights, fostering a safe community, and being part of a generation that is ready for change, you have the opportunity to shape the destiny of Swazell Saltebus. Remember that we are the chosen place, like a town built on a hill that cannot be hidden. This is your season. Your voice matters, your ideas are invaluable, and your actions can make a profound difference. Thank you and together, let's transform Swazell Saltebus into a beacon of positive change driven by our youth. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kimberly, very inspiring. Again, we call on the young people to rally with the United Workers' Party, the party of choice, the party that will make the difference for your future. And I just want to remind St. Lucians and to inform some of the young people who may not know that when we talk of development and progress during the reign of United Workers' Party, most of what you see as landmarks in St. Lucia were brought about by the United Workers' Party. The few things that the Labour Party is doing is just copying some of what we have planned because they never came in with a plan. But only that, you're getting a smaller version of it. We had a top world-class hospital planned for you. They gave you a substandard eight-year-old building as a hospital. We had an international airport planned for you. They're going to build one for you that is not even on the level of St. Vincent and other neighboring islands. When it came to roads, you saw the kind of work that we did. They told you that people do not eat roads and I have something to say about that later. Everything that we did was on a bigger scale. We had an international horse racing track. Now they scratch a little surface for you to have horse racing. That is not what we deserve, St. Lucia. We deserve far more, far better. And the things that they criticize are the things that they now embrace, like the cupboard development that they demonstrated against. Today, they're toasting and drinking champagne because it exists. The work of the United Workers' Party. And young people, if you see a few top-class sporting facilities around the island like Grosley, like Soufret, like Miku, like Denry, that is the work of the United Workers' Party. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call on another speaker from Swazell, from this constituency, to deliver some brief remarks. I would like to invite Ms. Monalyn Didier to address you. A round of applause as you welcome her to the podium.
Amai flabo! Esan powé pou la toalana! Nou pa ka mete nom sa adom! Bradley Felix, my Bradley! I love that rap! I love that man! Bradley Felix, the rap for St. Swazell Saltebus. I love that man! Bradley Felix! Moi c'est un femme, un d'else! La me gade, kote meka westé à! Tishimé à, pointoué, homé! Sa ka fe tchémé, fémé mal! Moi kuyé à sou Bradley Felix! Ek moi di, moi vle chimé sa awahe! Lapli, lowaï, zeklé! Le samedi, moi ne busha échayé moi! Ek kou é chimé à! Ouèda, lapli, lowaï! Van na pa ka toué bòsa idé moi! Moi kuyé à sou nom sa Bradley Felix! My rap, who I love very much! Oh my God! Amai flabo! Esan powé! Nom sa pa ka sorti là! Allez, nous vleme ido! I pa ka sorti koyé là! Amai flabo! Moi kuyé à sou Bradley Felix! Ek moi di chimé à, i mache à sou moi! Ek i di moi Monalyn! Moi ka é fe, sa moi sabaw! I kuyé, moi westé, moi di à tchémé! Mis siya pa é gade pou moi man! I pa... Mis siya pa ka é gade pou moi man! Moi kuyé à la ya ka i di moi! Na vini pou, point ché, point koua! I moi di ah, sa c'est nom moi men! Bradley Felix! Ah, brado! From better machine à la capette, ouche, yo pa ka tiola! No way! There's no way that man will come out from here. Swazell Saltebus, my rep, Bradley Felix! No, no, no! Aldo, la nou per direction! Moi gaye deux whisky handle! Yo black and white, yo duos! Moi di pou nous célébrer! La moi tan Spider ate, Guy Joseph ate! Moi pisela moi! Moi di ah! Moi still é ve! Moi mache à éboshimé, la moi é ve halfway! Moi toune da moi, moi deviway! Moi sixka é moi! Moi kou é sa plé à by nom sa! Bradley, ah, brado! No way! Yo ka é me wa te! Ah, Brad! Moi ko tao sa Bradley! Moi love you! Ek tou tchémé na do sa! Moi love nom sa! Nom sa mache à sou moi, ek i di moi na by six femmes! Tou avai pou é chimé à pointoué bòsa idé moi! Moi na tishok, kou na venti homé! Na fe tisuit jamé! Ek ba guy moi la! Ek pièce machine pa vla toué la, i di moi Monalyn! Moi ka vini pou ba oua tou avai, mena by six femmes tou avai! Pou, wakoua jessimé sa, i va nou six femmes tou avai! Mais is still deni deti nom ma di dai! Mais den plus femmes pa henom! C'est pour vous ché! Bradley la, pou femme, pou nom, assozaye! Bradley Felix! Amai flabo! Esan powé! As six femmes sa é by tou avai la! Nous emploé comme un homme pour faire tou avai lefin nou! Mais nou femmes se li da, nous se boss! Ouè! Alé tou avai, nous se boss! Alé tou avai nou, nou kadio sa nou vle! Ek men niè nou vle tou avai nou fe! Oh diya! Moi pa ka échayé échayé moi éboshimé! Oh diya! Machine gavina la pa ka é moi! Ouabasé moi! Ek mene moi pa la place sou fouya! Amai flabo! Esan powé pou rita nom sa la, pou tou é di moyeze! Ah oué! Sa c'est nam nou! Sa c'est nam nou! Même si i pa tite sa, pifin deleva ba guy la! Me i ka deleva ivanou! Nou pa ka kité nom sa ale! Pièce kote! Pièce kote! Si nou fe sa, nou atwaka! Right now la! Ah, amai flabo! Prime Minister ka power, sa i di nou, i plot e fig! So that's mean, mis zate ka é vini! So i di nou, i plot e fig! Nou pa te sa! Nous pate sav, ki sa itè mine, me aboèza nous sav. Mama y flabot! Nous powé pou vial pou bòs nous. Fren, da la pa party, mete y d'or. Et mete chasse na di da. Ça nous muzé right now là. Mama y flabot! Papa moi, i had this is. I de ga campaign by Rufus. Là y mouta là ma clap, i di United Workers' Party. I di Unions Party. So mama y flabot! The United Workers' Party, our party, my party, forever. Ma katu ne dèk, koume di, ay. Munna pa vin pa le Bradley Malbaum. Ah, akwa kotoa y moi. Uka i fè moi koumé, ou nom ça Bradley Felix, my man, my rep. My man, my rep for Shuazel Saltybus. Bradley Felix, I love you. Mama y flabot! Papa moi de à sou bad restly. Joseph Sembras, better known as Evans. I di moi, pas chimé vote le ba, Monalé. Pas chimé vote le ba i chimé. Continé, douvain, alè douvain, parle de. Moi aimé papa moi pou ça. So moi v'lait tout mama y moi, ka sou même côté à. Côté moi et côté yo allè. Moi kama, moi kapa, moi kahassel pou soué mama y moi. Mama là, nouka vote by Bradley Felix. The man, the man, our man, the man, my man for Shuazel Saltybus. Bradley Felix, I love you with all my heart. And I will always call on you when I needed you. Thank you very much. Bonsoir.
Yes, that one was fiery. O sa vna apoué sié, le moon kamoutué appuisi asion yo pou bon tavay. Si ibon, di ibon. Bon, moi just vle di apol. Madame na di manier, chay fèy mal, lay omé, guy, Spider. But many nouvelle, you cannot keep a good man down. We will rise again with your help and your support. Pascal Bradley kaya bisé kouaï sa, pou i fè pli tavay by Jean Soisey. Bon, moi ni pou palabot chimé hodi avant meeting sa fini. Lè moi tan, manier Madame na apoué sié chimé Bradley febaliya. O sa mahé metan Bradley palabot sa. Moi tan ni pou drive à l'essois à m'saltybis. Et lè moi y ve là moi highway, Bradley pa palabot sa. Ah comme si di we, tavay là nou ni pou fè. Nou kan ek fè tavay là sans pièce excitement, sans pièce des autres. Mais, laniant il est bagozile, i fè yo t'chimé, i kouchan lè chimé. Même chimé à mon bagamari, nouka i palabot sa tou swit. Nouka i palabot sa talé. But ladies and gentlemen, as we continue, I can feel the heat. Can you feel the heat? Amémdi tan anpa oblié, pey nou, ah twaka. St. Lucia is in trouble, and that is why we are here today. While St. Lucia is in trouble, we must not let our hearts be troubled. We have to take a stand and do something about it. We are on the right track. We are doing what it is we are supposed to do. Let us begin to rally with the United Workers' Party. Because I keep saying, we are building momentum, and nothing can stand in the way of momentum. So now, ladies and gentlemen, I will call on the next speaker to deliver some brief remarks. And that is another local speaker from this constituency. I would like to invite Mr. Thomas Eugene to address you.
Good night, everybody. Bonsoir tout monde. Pan yo problème chimé is moi ou sa. Because, pa because of Iblé, moi c'est Stevenson King. Moi j'a joué en bat, moi j'a hospitalized, moi j'a ped Patrick Lacley Kai moi. Moi j'a ped phone moi pour la petit party moi. And I stand strong by the United Workers' Party. Alright, okay. Only red. Earlier on, I heard Mr. Spider say that the Shuazel people move smart and intelligent, putting Bradley in office for the second term. He is right, you know why? Mr. Bradley Felix is a performer. This man have performed. This man have performed for the Saltybus and the Shuazel people. I will give another example again. I have a aunt, she died at 111 years. She even buried it. Mr. Bradley, I witnessed a day of a birthday. Mr. Bradley hugged that lady so tight. You swear he wanted to kiss her. The love, the love he has for the people. So at that time, this man must remain in office, okay? I'm sending a message for Saltybus, Baraka Darba people. Remember Ferguson Johnson's tutums. They do nothing for the people, especially the road. And what you was hearing the Saltybus people talking about is the cry, fix the road, fix the road. Rufus came, be honest, he do something. Lontio chillot, cam, nothing. The district rep, I remember, he said, boy, the Saltybus people been crying for years for that road. I remember Mr. Guy Joseph say, boy, it's a lot of work. You want to do half and do half another time? He said, no, we doing all. So I'm sending a message for the Saltybus people, no matter who going up for the St. Lucia Labour Party, brush them aside. They're not working, they are not workers. The only time St. Lucia Labour Party know we St. Lucian people when they're not in office. Anytime they're in office, they don't know us. We had a great leader, Mr. Alan Michael Charsley. This man before, he did not win yet. He said, listen, you all vote for me. Labour Party had divat at 15%. We get in office, we put at 12.5%. He get in office, it happened. He said, vote for him again, he'll drop it down to 10%. We did not move the right way, brush him out. We paid for that. Labour Party, within two years, they jack it up. Two and a half. So we cannot afford to have those liars in office. Okay, we cannot afford that. That idea talking about mama, moi te labour, papa, moi te labour, côté yo y. Sometimes those people die long time. Let we look for progress. Let we look for workers. Let we continue. You see Bradley? Bradley will win over and over and over. You know why? He's a performer. Mr. Guy Joseph, after he lost his election, you know what I say? If this man is not going back up for election, I'm not voting. You know why? A great man, he loved the people. Mr. Dominic Ferry, this man could have feel the cry of the Canaries and Slurry people. We cannot afford to leave or put those great leaders out. We cannot. There is a young man by Derser side, he have a spine. He need to go surgery. And raising funds, because you know, we all do that. But what I'm not getting, Mr. Alan Charsley had healthcare in place for us. So when you tell me I have a spine pain and I have to raise donation, man lad lak avni pli mian lè moi. And when this man had things in order for us. Wake up, my people. Wake up. Wake up, we sleeping. I'm calling on the fishermen. Philippe J.P.S. say that. Lo kaya lame, obasi wé pou pou so nighty one fifty ya. Cote one fifty ya. Cotei. Philippe J.P. di, moi aimé, eat more bananas, more bananas. Aboèza bagamé men fig sou wè se bananas. The man don't have no plan. Stop following people that don't have plan. Alan Charsley, gardes ça, 80 years low pital. Mr. Guy Joseph, minister, the ministers, them, the prime minister say, you know what? St. Lucia tired of being in darkness. We want St. Lucia to look like New York. Well hospital, build that proper. They call it a box. I used to be in the Virgin Islands, all hospitals shaped like a box. You know what I'm telling you? So you all want to go back in that old hospital. Cote ulugaweka, brit bat. There is a man from Saint Jacques, he's about 85 now. You know what this man tell me? I'll say that one in part one. He says sou v'lè wè mizé, c'est foot labour. He said again, the only time, sol soui, it is sell les sol soui kama jè. Zo nsi, c'est les labour gouvernement. Alright, so we cannot afford. Please, we cannot afford that. Bradley was in office, everybody getting work. You cannot give every everybody, but those he give, we dividing. As a matter of fact, when they were giving me to do, I'm a welder, I do welding for them. When they was giving me step program, the boss tell me, take 10 people, I taking 15. Everybody want to it. You know what I mean? Not because of, because if I building my house, I could afford five people, fine. But if the government give me a job, even the job call for five people, I want 15. Because we all want to live and survive. So I'm sending a message, we Shuazel people, hear that. You all ever experienced a junior creole? Like the last time, last sometime in November when Bradley Felix was in office? Labour Party not for us. Please, vote them out. Stevenson King, Monday say pou sa wé pe de chimé sa, pou moi mou chou wè. Nom na kabote blia pli nombre zo. Mr. Bradley Felix, this man have balls. So Mr. Spider, this man will continue to sit in office. You know why? Great performer. A day, I met Bradley in a meeting in Monsion. He had an old shoe in his feet. I come to him, he could, I don't believe he'll get vexed. I say, my boss, that's what you come in a meeting? You know what was his response? Thomas, the Shuazel Saltybus people did not put me in office to wear nice shoes. They put me there to work for them. And when I heard this man say that, I say, boy, God will continue shining the light on you. We need you, and you will be there with us. You get my point? I'm speaking about Ms. Belrose, I saw on television. And time of election, I still, I saw how this lady was pushing for the Marshall people. You know what I'm saying there? Very, very hard cock lady. I believe all the bullets them strong. I watched this lady. I said to myself, if you had campaigned a little earlier on, would I beat Stevenson King? Her father was my father's good friend. You know what I'm saying there? My father, he died, but I used to call him Lazarus funeral or Mr. Mike. And I was her good friend. And what I'm saying, I don't want to keep you all back. I don't want to stay too long. All I'm saying, it's time for the St. Lucia Labour Party to call the election, if they say they have balls, to see how fast we putting them out. Okay? And Mr. Dominic Ferry, Mr. Guy Joseph, oh, the flex. I will continue praying for you all. Continue, because you all are great people, and you all are workers. And we must stand strong by your side. And we'll continue doing that. Now, the Saltybus people, no matter your auntie, your sister going up, as long as they on the SLP team, don't vote for them. Because they ain't going up. If Poland going back up, she's not, no matter, I say she's a nice lady, she's not the prime minister. Whatever Philippe J.P.S. say, she'll follow. And Philippe J.P. is not a performer. So please, let we come together and keep talking about it and say, you know what, it's enough, it's enough. The ghost trees is... Imagine, I listened to a song not too long about my sister. Comme il se gabou té bagay bagay, i shétan. Pa m'msa di nosa hachti aboèza, à Bali ba party. Okay, so, great night. We'll talk some other time. Thank you for coming. One love, people, one love.
Thank you very much, Mr. Eugene. Another round of applause for Thomas Eugene. Yes, let the people testify of the great things that the United Workers' Party has done. Now, when we were in office, we put 150 on gas. And we said that was meant to develop roads in St. Lucia. Today, the government, when in opposition, they made a song and dance about it. They in government for two years, over two years now, they still collecting it. The difference is, what are you seeing for your 150? I will not stand here. Now you have Dominic, you have Bradley, you have Guy. These are all the young fellows come bed to me. And their political courage is still ahead of them. Bon moi ki har retire. Si moi pou do buti si ek palabot à hay yo jafè. Bon moi pa kòvle yo, komo se ta ha, palabot sa yo afè. Because you need pli tavay pou fè. Bon, moi afin fè à ta hay moi, moka i palabot sa. When the United Workers' Party was in office and we said to St. Lucians that we were not happy with the conditions of the roads around St. Lucia and that we would embark on an ambitious plan to rehabilitate and rebuild the major roads around the country, we charge 150. Chimé certainly si hen, 150 sa. Moi kwa si nou do if sten pou fin pay pou sa, nou toutka mort, nou ba fin pay boule. I look at the constituency of Grosily. Now it is a, so asay, le vini pou tè, so asay ni tèpè. Asay nou, mais le vini pou moon, Grosily ni montan. And we have a lot of developments all over the place. Let me turn, now we have very good representatives like Harold, Bradley, Dominic, Guy, those fellows. They fight for their people. Let me turn se buksan cabinet, manier ka gue pou, moi di moi di, pas semnay na yè. But we had a leader who understands leadership. We had a leader, but we have a leader. Ati ego prime minister, but he's still our leader and he will be continuing to do the work that he has done. Because, let's just cut to the chase. He has a plan and he has vision. And so when I presented my list for roads in Grosily, quiz why you to the cabinet? Moi kwa moi present a list of our 100 chimé. Boukon Bradley, Dominic, mademoiselle, moi kwa se moi on kiné. Moi di well, na y moi di pou sa moi v'lè, et na y wè sa moi jouen. Today, they replaced me with a young man, Kenston Kazimi, a baby. Ou gati ya, gwa nom e gwa mè a baby. Sa wexpe, ou gai jouen? The man, after almost two and a half years, but now, mind you, after two and a half years, that's half of his dome of office. Almost two and a half years after being elected, you build one road in Bauséjou. Ou kouchan lè chimé à, ou point portui, et ouka post. An chimé ki panikana, an chimé ki panis sidewalk. Ou v'lè palabot chimé, an pa labot chimé. Moi Spider, en ba administration United Workers' Party, et leadership Alan Charsley. Moi asé clani by Grosily, 76 roads. Bon, bon, hot, hot, c'est ça ki ka kouté le ba habituèt on mensonge. Ou bagat on mensonge ici ya. I have it on my phone, a list of every single road that was done during my tenure. Et kou sa à lè Grosily highway aboèza. Okay, so acholma, in five years, we had 76 roads. After seven years, we have 77. Ou kòpô na yè sa? At that pace, c'est les stochimé à kitè wet ya. Because I knew, because of the plan of the United Workers' Party, how my roads were being done. Magwen nou teni sabotage, alè amate kòpô ni. Bon kama hadme, Bradley kena chimé jaun by missi, because afè by blè sa. Nou ba fè yè ba minou, kafe moi chouje king. Bon, komo chouje king man pou di apol. Bradley fought for the Saltybus road, tooth and nail. But we did not realize what was taking place right among us there. The sabotage by Stevenson King that was taking place. If you did not have a vibrant, determined, responsible representative, you'd have never gotten that Saltybus road. He had to fight for it. And Bradley was not alone. Bebe made a big campaign about the De Ramo road. The road from De Ramo to Monsito. I campaign alè sa. Jis jordia chimé à men mania. That road was earmarked to be done under the Taiwanese Road Repair Program. Stevenson King point, et ki fè chimé vijè klaja. That was the sabotage that was taking place. Molengababie et Alan, Alan mou chémé lissla, but look, your road is supposed to be like. Allo ti Stevenson King, oh, I will look into that, I will look into that. Tout lè abougani plane like nou kav. Nou pavlè sé pèn pa mi nou abo. Évec moi kaya do obay. When you talk about roads that were done, do not fool yourself into thinking that was the work of Stevenson King. It was the work of the United Workers' Party. Et si ou pavlè kwa moi. Gardes ça ki kaya fè, apou sek, et Stevenson King à Bali ba. Gardi lè tashimé se plisi kaya yè. Because the guy is lazy. Because the guy is lazy, he's dead wit, he's a waste of time. So si Bebe que, chaque chimé, il fait, il couche, it'll be a long time before he gets to lie down again. So, I am happy and encouraged when I hear out of the mouth of the people of Shawzelle the appreciation they have for Bradley Felix and the work that he is doing. St. Lucia, those of you who are listening to me elsewhere, take example, when you have a good thing, cherish it. When it's good, say it's good. But nous savons, we glissituation, a mistake can always be corrected. And you have two shining examples of what we are supposed to do in Miku South and Shawzelle Saltybus. And that is what the rest of St. Lucia will be doing very soon. Ladies and gentlemen, talking about Brian Charles, a former chairman of your constituency branch, a former parliamentary representative of Shawzelle Saltybus, and a man I am pleased to see and proud to see is still with our party as a stalwart. I would like, and I, I tip my, my hat to those who have served before us, who set the foundation for us and paved the way for the rest of us to follow. I would like to call on this stalwart of the United Workers' Party to address you. Mister Brian, Brian Charles, to come and address you, former parliamentary representative.
Good night, good night, everybody. Alright. It gives me great pleasure to see how many of you have turned out to the Shawzelle leg of the mission that the United Workers' Party is on now. On this mission, we have to accomplish the mission to remove the Labour Party who has been on our backs for two and a half years and has caused us great misery, and return the United Workers' Party back to the glory days that we have known before. The result of this elect, of this last election, is a lesson. And you know what lesson this is? A lesson of comparison. A lesson of comparison. We had a government that performed for five years under the leadership of Alan Chastney. Then we have a government that has performed for two and a half years under the leadership of Philippe J. Pierre. And every one of us, and every one of us can make the comparisons now. And we are satisfied that we made a mistake and we have to get this government out of office. We made a mistake. Could you imagine, could you imagine if the United Workers' Party had won this last election? Where this country could have been? You have heard it from the chairman, you have heard it from all the speakers, the programs, the projects that were going on with the United Workers' Party. Where we would have been today, what would we have today in our midst? Today, as you have heard, we would have had a brand new world-class hospital. Today, we would have had an airport that would be blistering with work in the south. In fact, the south would be booming with work today. I am sure of that. What is happening in the south today? Nada. So isn't that enough? Isn't that enough to tell us, to tell us that we made? In fact, when I say we made a mistake, we didn't make a mistake, I'm not talking to people like you here. We did not make a mistake, people like you did not make a mistake. It is the people, the majority of the people who voted Labour who made that mistake. And I am calling on them today. I am calling on them today, the misery that is in this country today is not being felt by UWP's alone, it is being felt by all of us. And it is our responsibility, our responsibility now to do what is right. To do what is right. Comme je dis, en Choiseille, nous pas des faux mistake. Il s'est en plaisir, vous nous tente pas mal in money, money, mon Alin parler about sa Bradley fait. Mais moi voulais, les bons parties savent Bradley toi va en Choiseille. Moi t'es là, je vois Bradley venir à vie et community center au Piailla, là nous launch project là. Avec moi voulais, yo reconnaissiez pour ça, because ça c'est un bel pont, bon travail. Avec, fais un ceremony pour ouvert pour, nous savons, yo compte, yo ça fait ceremony. Avec Bradley fait, l'autre travail, mais sinon ni pour mationner. Mais il y en a ces travaillent là, moi voulais mationner. Chairman à par la bouteille tout, c'est chimé Saltybus là. Avec après nous aller, un autre toire, je veux chimé Saltybus là. Les bons parties pas même voulait reconnaissiez, l'argent Choiseille voté by Bradley, avec c'est Bradley qui ne pouvait présenter Choiseille Saltybus. C'est Pauline nous caoue comme c'est liquide ou vent. Après nous fait, après nous aller quand il, quand il était débile, ça comptait en chairman de vous. Chimé ça fait, avec les bons parties, un déla né à Yola. Yo pas même qu'à des chimés, ou dit ça c'est un bon chimé, eh bien nous quand même ten chimé. Vous savez ça café d'après ça? Là où on monte Saltybus, tout le monde ni pour drive et glacio en lait. Vous savez vous tirez votre glacio en lait, parce que Azier, il va chez Zéo. So, my dear people, we are on this mission. We are on this mission. Today, it is the Shawzelle leg to promote this mission. I am happy that you all have come out to support Shawzelle. And this mission will continue and will end only when we have put out the Labour Party. It is not a joke, we are in trouble. You heard from all our leaders, you heard from all our reps, you heard from every nook and cranny. The Labour Party has nothing to offer. Labour Party car viv nuit pour jour. They go to bed not knowing what will happen in the morning. Alright? They are leaving from, from night to day, not knowing what will happen. We have a leader that cannot call the shots. We have a leader that is not of prime ministership material. We have a, a, a leader who, who embarrasses us at every opportunity to represent St. Lucia. Can we continue with that? We have a leader, you know, I listened some, I heard something. Even the leader needs other persons to defend the things that he says. The other day, I heard a minister, top class minister Richard Frederick, trying to defend the Prime Minister for the, for the 1,500 dollars he, he, he promised. Maintenant, même ministre Richard Frederick, try to defend Prime Minister, par la bouteille tall and short. I, I can understand that, I know, I know, I cannot believe that. But if the Prime Minister wants a good definition of tall and short, if Mister Frederick wants to give the Prime Minister a good definition of tall and short, I think he would simply tell him, St. Lucia was standing very tall, but now it has fallen very short. And we cannot, we cannot allow, we cannot allow a government to dig our country, to bring our country so short, making us the laughing stock of the wider world. So my dear people, our mission is to look for the lost votes. The lost votes that removed us from office, let us look for them. Let us see how many we can change. Let us, let us look at the youth, let us see how many are eligible to vote. Let us make sure that they are on the voters list, so that we can, and it's only when we do that, we can regain, we can regain our strength, regain our power, and run and rule St. Lucia again. So my dear people, we have a big job ahead of us. Let me encourage you, do not give up. Don't give up. If you give up, it will be to our detriment. It will be to the detriment of the youth. We have to prepare a proper future for the young persons coming up. Because the future of this country is in their hands. And if we do not, if we do not do what we are supposed to do. So nous ni pour travail, don't give up. Let's move together, let's rally together, rally with the United Workers' Party. And let us make Honorable Alan Chastney our next Prime Minister. And we'll rally behind, and we'll rally behind Bradley Felix to make sure he remains our district rep and parliamentary representative in the House of Parliament. I thank you very much.
Well, well, well. I told you the man is a former politician, a former parliamentary rep, but the young people, you all didn't believe me? I mean, he said something that struck a chord with me. St. Lucia is in trouble. We are on a mission. Now he knows what he's talking about. He was part of a mission in 1982, when St. Lucia was in disaster. When the same St. Lucia Labour Party wrecked St. Lucia, he was part of that rescue mission that came back to put St. Lucia back on a good footing. I listened to the man, and the man said, now, totally, I've been struggling with the tall and short. Avec Brian Bowie. Very clear. So see Prime Minister, you have problem, et tall and short, just the, when UWP is there, St. Lucia stands tall. When he and Labour is there, St. Lucia is short. And talking about the mistake that we made.
Il est gay pour un, Jean Soi-zei, pour dit nous ça. Nous parti poule encore, mon gousse pas ça pour nous encore. Ouais, c'est books à ni lyrics. Ladies and gentlemen, these are the guys on whose shoulders we stand. These are people who have made the contribution, a round of applause for Brian Charles. Now, I'd just like to acknowledge a few more people sitting on the stage, no, politics, no other, on the platform. Le holy is, c'est parish, le other clubs, c'est community, le politics, c'est constituency. Ok, so tout bagay, ni langaïli, ça pas un stage, à sa platform. So ladies and gentlemen, I would like to acknowledge Senator Harold Stanislas, former parliamentary representative of Soufre. I would also like to acknowledge the former parliamentary representative of Denry South and Edmund Estefan. Our party treasurer, mona, si on y a la monnaie, vous voulez faire des contributions, mona, on vous parle ba y là. Mrs. Marcela Johnson. And our elections officer, the thing we're getting ready for. Our election officer, Mrs. Beryl George. And while I'm at it, let me also acknowledge a number of chairpersons who have come from the various constituencies to give their support. I would like to acknowledge the chairman of Miku North, Miss Elizabeth James, the chairperson for Miku North. The chairperson for Denry South, Miss Diana Williams. The chairman of Miku South, Mr. Philip Jean-Baptiste. The chairman for Soufre, Francais Jacques, Mr. Angus Jean-Baptiste, no relation. And the chairman for Ancelore Conriss, Mr. Andrew Lancyco. Ladies and gentlemen, as we continue, as we continue, I would like to call on a member of the executive, the national executive. But also, she is the chairperson of the Suazelle Saltybus constituency branch. I know that she worked very hard in the last campaign. And she is one of the chairpersons who delivered a constituency which will happen again in the next election. I know she is Bradley Felix right-hand woman, a hard worker, and she served us with distinction in the last five years while we were in office as the council general in Miami. I would like to call on Mrs. Tasso Daniel.
Ma ma, Flabou. Bienvenue à Soi-zei, os were, bienvenue. Ma ma, Soi-zei, Saltybis, moi, qu'on tape, ouais, zot, sortidor, and number zot, moi, qu'on tasse ça. My people, Saint Lucia is in trouble. Ek cos by the deal, but let not your hearts be troubled. Most people know, most people know that I'm a very passionate person. I'm very passionate about my community and my country. As a Suazalian, I have seen my community go through many transformations that I am proud, that I'm proud of, but equally, I have seen the regression of the strides made by the previous UWP administration. However, as a Saint Lucian, I cannot continue to stand by and say nothing about the rapid destruction of the land I love. My people, Saint Lucia is in trouble. Noa toi ka. In my entire life, I have never seen a government that is so uncaring and oblivious to the plight of its people, never. I remember the everyday mantra of putting people first. But now, it's putting people worse. Ask any Saint Lucian you meet, has your life changed for the better since the Labour Party came into office? And every single one of them will tell you, no. Even the supporters of the Labour Party will tell you, well, you know, they're trying. Things are hard everywhere, but they are not proud to tell you that they supported the Saint Lucia Labour Party, yo, what ? This is rather unfortunate, my people, because it's only two years and so many people are having buyer's remorse. So today, I am speaking out for the single mothers who no longer matter to the SLP. The single mothers who are afraid that if they speak out, they will be victimized. They won't get to a step or the elderly care program. The single mothers who are unemployed and don't know where the next meal is coming from to feed their children. The single mothers who now have to pay more for bread, more for bus fare, more for cooking gas, and now more for kerosene. The single mothers who now have to pay an additional two point five percent tax on goods and services in this country. Et maintenant, boss, al kashaté, massy kafé, mon pléwe, pli moi acheter, pli moi pléwe. Moins voulez, al korek sa, c'est le bas qui kafé, mon pléwe. Parce que massy pate mete two point five percent tax à les autres. Labour Party, ya, qui mete two point five percent, so c'est le bas kafé, mon pléwe. I know they voted to be put first, but now they are all worse. Why would a woman sit in cabinet and allow her government to burden the lives of other women? Do they not have a conscience? Do they not care about the cries of the people? Only a wicked and uncaring government will continue to pile taxes upon taxis on the poor people to facilitate their lavish lifestyles. You see them every day, traveling all over the place, creating jobs for their families, their friends, and others at the hierarchy of the Labour Party. I don't see you, the single mothers, getting any sustainable jobs. I don't see your children getting positions or even scholarships. I don't see your husbands and your boyfriends being employed. It's all about them, it was never about you. Do you see them fighting to save your jobs? But they are fighting to save the job of a gentleman who has numerous allegations of sexual misconduct against him. It's not one or two allegations, you know, it's six, six. How many more women have to come out for the prime minister to act? Seven, eight, how many? I'm sure many of you have seen or heard of the Me Too movement or even the last case in Britain about the allegations leveled against a famous actor about thirteen years ago, when he was working for the BBC. What did the government do? They did the responsible thing. They called for an immediate investigation into the allegations to find out if there is any truth to it. Why can't our prime minister and his cabinet do the same thing? Instead, they are fighting day and night to sweep this under the carpet. I stand here today to say, no, I am a woman, I am a mother, I am an aunt, and I call for the government to do what is right. Call for an investigation into this matter. If they could do it for impact, they can do it for those women who... They can do it for those women who still have to go to work every day and look this man in the face and report to him. That is not right and can never be right. My Saint Lucian family, today is the day that we all should stand up and say, it is enough. We cannot allow this government to treat us with such scant disregard. We cannot and should not be afraid to speak out because the potential backlash from government, because of the potential backlash from government ministers. We cannot continue to live in fear. We are living in fear in this country. Fear of victimization, fear of survival, and fear from the criminals. How am I supposed to feel safe as a woman in this country when my government is doing nothing to protect me? Instead, the government is condoning criminal behavior. Do you remember the first thing they did when they came into office? They decriminalize the behavior of their supporters who broke the law. These people deliberately and willfully broke the law, and the Labour Party pardoned them. Why? Because they aided them in their victory? And today, there is a possibility that the state will have to pay the likes of Christopher Hunt, hundreds of thousands of dollars for breaking the law. That is money that could have gone towards the feeding programs. That is money that could have continued to subsidize the price of flour so that the price of bread would not go up. Imagine pay, basic needs, pay, zaka increase, we pay. Our and uncaring government, moi, do, simply see, noa toi ka. But that is not the priority of this government. They have told you that their priority is protecting the victory. So, my people, can't you see that this country is in trouble? Yes, we are in trouble. When a government can say to you that there is nothing they can do to reduce the cost of living, but go to parliament and put an additional tax on your backs of two point five percent, we are in trouble. When a government, after two years, cannot create sustainable employment for the young people of this country, but continue to ride on the cutails of the Alan Shastney initiatives, we are in trouble. When a prime minister who said he was most ready because he had been in waiting for over twenty years and can tell you that he did not understand the impact of tourism on the economy, we are in trouble. When a so-called junior minister in the prime minister's office can be on a television station every Thursday night threatening every citizen of this country because they choose to speak out against the madness happening in this country, we are in trouble. When a television station can allow talk show hosts to threaten violence and to beat up people who voice their opinions on social media and the government can endorse those statements, we are in trouble. When a government can promise you universal health care but turn around and provide basic support to approximately two thousand pregnant women and call that universal health care, we are in trouble. When the elderly cannot access basic medical care but have to wait till they are eighty years, but still cannot get medication readily available, we are in trouble. All these things and more, and I can go on for the rest of the evening. And I am sure you can come up with many more issues. Saint Lucia, we are in trouble. We need Operation Rescue Saint Lucia with the United Workers Party. My fellow Saint Lucians, I know many of you have acknowledged your mistake in electing the Labour Party. I know many of you are feeling the squeeze. I know that things are hard in this country and you can barely survive. But I say to you, hang on, help is on the way. The United Workers Party is putting a team of men and women together who will rescue Saint Lucia and bring back stability, jobs, quality education, and affordable health care to this country. We will build what has been broken, and we will ensure that we never make that mistake of ever allowing another Labour Party administration to rule this country ever again. I thank you.
Thank you very much, Tasso, a very powerful contribution. I listened very carefully. Mo écouter, qu'on t'a senté kadi nou, mania noa toi ka. Mais là, toi, Tasso fin ban nous laisse là, c'est un chay, pli pé toi ka, un chay, kahila. En balé bas, messieurs, adan pouvait vite nous karen konou, vous savez qui kade kahila, kati lisa. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge a gentleman who was a former chairman of the Suazelle Saltybus constituency branch and a regular contributor on social media, a stalwart, strong supporter of the United Workers Party. A round of applause, Mr. Jimmy Haines. Bon, et toutes ces casse à nous ni, moi perdi toi ka, because là, ni un chay, pli kabo diu. Et toutes ces casse à nous ni, like Brian told you, we need to embark on this rescue mission and all hands must be on deck. In this process, we need workers. And we need tried, tested, and proven workers. It's not talkers. The Labour Party has proven themselves to be talkers. The United Workers Party has proven that we are workers, and that's where the difference lies. And so, ladies and gentlemen, if we want to see Saint Lucia succeed in this rescue mission and to get back on a good footing, to alleviate all the sufferings, as Tasso indicated, especially as being experienced by single parents and their children in this country, we must bring back the United Workers Party. And we can stay all night talking about the accomplishments of the United Workers Party. But what is more important is what it is we are going to do about the current situation. We have told you that for health care, we will complete the state-of-the-art hospital that you deserve here in the south, and have a wing of that hospital to provide top-class specialized treatment where we can generate revenue, where people of Saint Lucia do not have to fly to Martinique, Miami, and other countries for treatment that can be done right here. And people from Saint Vincent, Dominica, and neighboring islands can come to Saint Lucia to get quality health care as well. We are going to provide you with health insurance, not universal health care, as promised, and as Tasso told you. She said, what they're providing is to, less than two thousand mothers with a service, and the rest of the people who would benefit, you must be eighty years and over. I keep reminding you, pa compter, unless ça, the life expectancy in Saint Lucia is seventy-three. You will be lucky to live to be eighty, eighty years old. And those who live to be eighty years old are no more than about five thousand people in our entire population. So all told, they are not providing anything to any more than seven thousand people. And in that, there is still a bluff, because when you go to the health center, when you go to the clinic, when you go to the hospital, the pharmacies there do not have the medication. You still have to find the money to go to a private pharmacy to buy those medications. What UWP will do is to provide health insurance. Those of you who are employed will pay a small fee towards that insurance monthly. Those who are not employed, government will put in the contribution for them. And every single Saint Lucian, every one of the hundred and eighty thousand of you will be entitled to free health care. And you may even be able to carry out your surgeries, your operations, up to seventy-five thousand dollars. Because it is not just pregnant mothers who are sick, who get sick. It is not only eighty-year-olds who get sick. All of us can possibly get sick at some time in our lives. That is the difference. When it comes to education, we're not just going to give your child a laptop, an empty laptop. And if you do not enter internet at home, it's almost rendered useless. We will bring back the ebooks which can function as a computer. But at the same time, you will have all the textbooks that your children need downloaded on that ebook so you will not have to worry about buying textbook at the end of the year. That is the difference between a Labour government that has put you in problems, that has led the country into trouble, and a United Workers' Party that will lead you back to progress and prosperity. I promise you, I promise you, there is no hidden tax when we get into office. And I can say, on this platform, we are going to remove that 2.5 tax that everyone has. We are not going to increase your sufferings. We will take measures to ameliorate your problems and make things better for you. So ladies and gentlemen, I talked about one of the ingredients that is necessary is workers. I would like to call on a worker to address you right now. Don't take my words for it. And you will see for yourself the kind of work that Herod Stanislas did for the people of Soufre. And they rejected that and brought in someone that I can tell you is a non-performer because she has represented Grozily. After this term, we will make the comparison between Emma and Herod, and you'll see it is night and day. Jean Soufier, obligé, we guetti. And they will bring back Herod Stanislas. I call to address you now a worker, Herod Stanislas, the future rep for Soufre.
Mama flabot! Suezal Saltebus, good night! To the members of the head table, to you all in the hall this evening, to persons at home, persons in the diaspora listening to us, a pleasant and special good evening to everyone. On my way, I'm here, I heard a young lady, I think Miss Finney said, Suezal is the land of shabbins. Well, I am a shabban from Suezal as well. Because I have my family roots in Saltebus. The Shalmines, the Ravinos, the Smiths, the Antuans. I have in Monjac, Victoria, the Blaise. I have the Stanislas, I have the Augustine, the John, the Polion in Espera-Suezal. So moi c'est ma maïchoise aussi, the shabban from Suezal and Soufre. It is really, really an honor to be here this evening to support Honorable Bradley Felix, your parliamentary representative. A man who has proven himself. And tonight, I must thank you, the people of Suezal Saltebus, on behalf of the United Workers' Party. And I want to thank you for sticking with United Workers' Party, for reposing your confidence in July 2021 in Bradley Felix. Despite all the lies, all the half-truths, all the fake news, all the propaganda, you stuck with this man because you value what this man delivered to you for the five years in office. You did not make a mistake, Suezal. The rest of Lucia made a mistake when they voted out the United Workers' Party. And I know, Bradley, my brother, come next time, you are going to be re-elected in Suezal Saltebus by a bigger, bigger margin than last election and the election before. Because your work has shown that you deserve a third term, a fourth term, a fifth term, a sixth term, a seventh term, and F-term in Suezal until you pass that baton to somebody else, Bradley. The only thing the Labour Party had going for them when they came into office was the works which Bradley Felix started in Suezal. Nothing, they stopped everything, but they couldn't stop the PI breach. They couldn't stop the Roblo Community Center. They couldn't stop the PI Community Center. And hell no, they could not stop what Bradley had started at the Fishery Complex in Suezal. All they did, they came and they beat empty pans. Have we ever elected a prime minister, a cabinet of ministers, a government as disastrous as Philip J. Pierre under Saint Lucia Labour Party? The only legacy Philip J. Pierre and the Labour Party is going to have after the cold elections, after Alan Shastner becomes prime minister, Bradley Felix is re-elected, and the men and women of the United Workers' Party forms the next government of Saint Lucia is a legacy of failure, a legacy of incompetence, a legacy of misery, a legacy of frustration, a legacy of anger, and a legacy of the darkest prime minister we've ever had in the history of this country. 2.5% is now added to telebutaries on DBS, Hot FM, or whichever station you are going to announce the funeral arrangements of your loved ones. Even the dead cannot and will not be spared on the Philip J. Pierre and the Labour Party. That shows you the level of wickedness, of evil, in the Saint Lucia Labour Party. And Philip J. Pierre, Saint Lucia Labour Party, enough is enough, you have to go. Imagine if your mother, your grandmother, sometimes even your great-grandmother is to celebrate a little jubilee. You have to pay 2.5% on hair right now. Philip J. Pierre is taxing the elderly people 2.5% on their hair if they want to put a little wig to look beautiful on that special day. That is the incompetence. That is a prime minister who has no love, no compassion, no empathy for you, the people of Saint Lucia. And for that Suezal, for that Saint Lucia, when that bell rings, we need to match in numbers and get rid of Philip J. Pierre, get rid of Saint Lucia Labour Party, and bring back the torch, bring back the light, bring back Alan Shastner, bring back Bradley Felix, bring back the workers of the United Workers' Party. This is a government that has put you, the people, worst off. The only thing they do is to tax the people. They have no creativity, they have no vision, they have no plans to grow this economy, to create wealth, to create opportunities, to create empowerment to you, the people. All they do is to suck every penny, every dollar from your pockets. And that prime minister must go. He must go. Ladies and gentlemen, if you have to import a small car, you have to understand, you have to imagine the amount of additional monies you have to pay to the government of Saint Lucia for that car. When the car arrives on the port in Saint Lucia, you have to pay 2.5% on the cost insurance and freight. Après ça, the guy still charge you 12.5% VAT. The broker who clears the vehicle for you have to be paid 2.5% additional monies on his fees. You met a law, and you have to understand that, you know. They have a law now that the vehicle cannot leave the port without license plate, without insurance, without stickers. And just for you to pay additional monies in Japan and additional monies in Saint Lucia. We were the ones who brought the environmental levy on vehicles from 12,000 to 6,000. But that was not enough for them, they didn't like it, they were not satisfied. They are out to take revenge on you, the people of Saint Lucia. They have to find a way to make you pay more money in Japan for inspection and more money when the vehicle gets on the port. When you go to the bank to get a loan to clear that vehicle, you have to pay the lawyer who is writing up, who is preparing the bill of sale to be registered on that vehicle to use the vehicle as security, an additional 2.5%. When you go to transport board to register that vehicle, to get the number plate, to get your sticker, you pay another 2.5%. When you go to the Excel sign or whichever place to make the number plate, you have to pay 2.5%. And compounding it, brothers and sisters, with all that 2.5 you're paying, look at the condition of the roads in Suezal, in Soufre, in Saint Lucia. And you tell me that this is a prime minister, this is a government with a conscience? They do not care. They do not care, they are out to destroy this country. And in two and a half years, they are well on the way to bringing Saint Lucia down to the gutters. But you, the people, you, our flambe families, those of you who did not go to the polls last election, those of you who allowed the Labour Party to mislead you, to fool you, you have a decision to make. A decision for your children, your grandchildren, your great-grandchildren, for the future of this country, to go to the polls in droves and get rid of this disastrous prime minister that we have in the name of Philip J. Pierre. You have to do that. Look at the condition of the roads in Suezal. This is the worst we have ever seen the roads, the infrastructure of this country have come to under the Saint Lucia Labour Party, under the leadership of Philip J. Pierre. A disaster. And I know, when United Workers' Party get back to office, when Bradley Felix is re-elected, we have a mam of tasks on our hands to repair, to rebuild, to reconstruct the road and infrastructure network of this country. But I have no fear, brothers and sisters, because I know the United Workers' Party, under the leadership of Alan Michael Shastner, our deputy political leaders, Guy Joseph, Dominic Ferdy, Bradley Felix, and the men and women we are going to have on our team to fight the Labour Party at the next elections. We have been tried, we have been tested, and we have proven ourselves that we are a party of workers. We can deliver, we are going to rescue Saint Lucia, and we are going to make you, the people of Saint Lucia, you, the people of Flambe family, the people of Suezal, proud again in Saint Lucia, in Suezal, under the United Workers' Party as your next government. We say neighbours, but we have other speakers. But I want to let you know that there is no other representative more suited to continue and deliver for you, the people of Suezal Saltebus, other than Bradley Felix. This is the best parliamentary representative you've had in the history of political representation in Suezal Saltebus. But Bradley Felix does it his way. And by doing it his way, he gets it done for his people. Bradley Felix has the support of the men and women of the United Workers' Party. He is going to continue to have that support. And you, the people of Suezal, have proven that you are resilient people. You are going to continue sticking with Bradley, continue sticking with United Workers' Party. And rest assured, we are going to get Saint Lucia out of the trouble that it is, out of the misery that Philip J. Pierre have put this country. And we are going to be once again standing tall in the eastern Caribbean, in the Caribbean region, and Saint Lucia, and Saint Lucian throughout the length and breadth of this country, the diaspora. The world are going to be proud of our fair Helen once more when Alan Shastner, and rest assured, Alan Shastner is going to be the next prime minister for Saint Lucia. Thank you and good night, Suezal Saltebus.
Thank you very much, Herod. Another of the United Workers' Party's workers. Ladies and gentlemen, we are on a mission because our country is in trouble. We have launched a campaign. And we are determined to bring Saint Lucia back on the path of development and progress. But guess what? The Labour Party campaigned for five years. They became the government. Instead of running the affairs of the country and governing, they are still campaigning. But we have a prime minister who has not understood that he is now prime minister. Worse yet, he does not have what it takes to be prime minister. He has embarrassed you in every way, he has misrepresented you in many ways, and more and more, he is bringing shame to our eyes. You buy, Monsieur, a speech go Gwen Kito Lubuli. And the man kept making errors after errors. At least he could have familiarized himself with the speech before he went there. That is the kind of embarrassment Saint Lucians have come to know under the Saint Lucia Labour Party with Pierre as our prime minister. But you know who is his main defender now? Who realize? Me Richard Frederick. Richard Frederick, you realize, was once a minister in the United Workers' Party. A full-fledged minister. Years later, you are a junior minister in a Labour government. And Pip has him in his office to do just what he is doing, to blow his trumpet and to keep brown-nosing. And what Richard has been doing is kissing up to the prime minister because he knows that the Saint Lucia Labour Party does not want him in their midst. So when Rick Wayne talked about tall and short, Peter Rick Wayne, not because he's short. Richard took offense and attacked Rick Wayne. Rick Wayne. Now he sees himself as Philip Pierre's attack dog, but he does not realize that in the process he came from a pit bull to a mongrel. Ladies and gentlemen, we must take a stand for our country. We cannot allow this government to ruin all what Saint Lucia has accomplished and to continue on that path of destruction. So I'm asking you to get up. I'm asking you to stand up. I'm asking you to do something, join the fight to defend your country, to rescue your country, and to bring your country back on the path of development. Now, when you do so, the United Workers' Party has a slit of men and women who are ready to work. And I always describe the United Workers' Party's team as a team that is ready to hit the ground running. And so, Herod repeated it, we have people who have been tried, tested, and who have proven themselves. I'd like to bring to you, as I leave the podium for a moment, the next speaker. So we're going from tall to short. I want to bring to you another worker of the United Workers' Party, a man who proved himself. And while he is short, he stood tall as a giant in his constituency of Ancelore Canaries and delivered for them. And I have no doubt that they are pleased with the work that he did. I would like to invite our deputy political leader, Senator Dominic Ferri, to address.
Thank you, Spider. Thank you, thank you. Are you ready for the fight? Are you ready for the war? Now, I remember Philip said to me once, I don't know what I said about him, but Bradley, your rep knows me very well. And I think I said in the 2016 election something to upset Philip. So he said, you know, Ferri is five foot two, and he said that Ferri is 52 pounds. So the next night, I went on the political platform and I said, Philip, you forget to say one thing. All right, all right, all right. We must be able to laugh about our politics. Today, I want to join all the voices that have congratulated the man I'll adopt him tonight as Brado. I sat in carbonex next to Brado. And what a lovely neighbour Brado was. When I didn't have a pen, I took Brado's pen. When I didn't have paper, I take Bradley's paper. And when I didn't have breakfast, I took all the sandwiches that his wife made for him as well. But Brado is such a caring and a lovely guy, and I'm sure that I was annoying to have as a neighbour because I took everything he had. Such a great man, such a great character. And so, I'm telling you that I stand here tonight to endorse Brado as the man to run this seat for Shuizel Saltilbas in the next election. So I see the Labour Party have some nonsense going around about Brado, that Brado all of a sudden is going to defect, and Brado this and Brado that. Let me tell you about the Brado I know. Brado is a decent man. Brado is not dead weight. Brado will never, ever betray the people of Shuizel Saltilbas, never, ever. That's the Bradley Felix I know, a man who came every day and fought for his constituency, a man who said, look, there were several ministers who promised the Saltilbas Road. There were several MPs who had given the people of Shuizel empty promises. In fact, at the time when we were coming into government, the previous Minister of Infrastructure was the now Prime Minister Philip J. Pierre. And just before the general elections, he had a problem paying $650,000 to pay just to pothole the Saltilbas Road. But when Bradley Felix came into office, he convinced the Minister of Finance and the United Workers' Party Cabinet to spend $15 million to give the people of Shuizel Saltilbas their best road that the Shuizel Saltilbas constituency has ever seen. That's the Brado I know. I remember him going with the then Minister of Agriculture because the fishermen in Shuizel had a problem with the fish landing facility. And Brado convinced the minister to come with him to Japan and to go and to convince the Japanese government that this project was necessary. This project, to my recollection, cost about $6 million Eastern Caribbean dollars because to Bradley, he didn't promise the fishermen that he was going to give them a rebate on excise tax. He delivered what he promised. He said that he was going to do the fish landing facility. And as a man in the true character that he is, he delivered for the fishermen of Shuizel Saltilbas. The biggest housing development any minister has ever done in this constituency happened right down the road at La Fag, when Bradley Felix within Saint Lucia constructed the biggest and the highest quality housing development for the people here in Shuizel Saltilbas. That's the man I know, not a man who crosses the floor. And so Philip, you can jump high, you can jump low, you will not get our Brado. Where is she? You will not get our Brado because Bradley Felix is a man of his word. When he tells you he is doing it, he is doing it. And so today, I stand proud to stay here in this constituency and give him my unrelenting support. Now, let me show you the opposite of the Labour Party. In the parliament this week, we were debating the 2.5% tax. They call it the health and security levy. And you would recall that while we were in government, the Ministry of Health, they said that they were going to put some rules, that if someone was going to have a charcoal pit, that that person just simply needed to apply. They said that there were people who were asthmatic, there were young babies in houses who were being affected by people randomly constructing charcoal pits. And we needed to have some regulation in place, we needed to have some order. Anyways, by putting out this regulation from the Ministry of Health, the Labour Party went and misled the people of Saint Lucia that the United Workers' Party was going to tax the people for making charcoal. Y'all remember that? It was big news all over Saint Lucia. Now, I bring with you a law that they have passed in the parliament. And as a senator, I had to get a copy of the law. And on page eight of this piece of legislation, one of the things that they are applying the 2.5% tax on is the same charcoal that they said that they were trying to protect. The same charcoal producers are being taxed 2.5%. That's the hypocrisy of the Saint Lucia Labour Party. They do one thing in opposition, and when they're in government, they do another thing. Philip J. Pierre, so hot Philip J. Pierre, you have no shame. This is the level of hypocrisy from the Labour Party. This is the level of double standard. Page eight on their law, it says that charcoal are going to be taxed 2.5%. Herod told me the path were the share ball. I think I got that one right. Now, now here is the thing, when you tax the charcoal man, you are not just taxing the man who is making the charcoal, you are taxing the vendor who is buying from the man and barbecue chicken on a Friday night to send her children to school. That's who you are taxing. And so we had reason to tell them that this is a dangerous tax, that this tax was going to cause increased suffocation in this country. We told them that food would be affected. They said, no, that they have exempted food. But what did we see? A letter from KFC saying that because of the 2.5% tax, that KFC is increasing their prices. I took the notice to parliament and I said, look, Madam President, there's a notice here from KFC. Lisa Jaya where or Jaya who? Or whatever her name is. Said that that's a false document that KFC never put out. Sector that's putting out letter just this week, I want to read you in case you haven't seen it, that the National Housing Corporation has now informed their tenants that their rent is going to go up by 2.5% in this country. It's not just the private sector. It is also public sector institutions are indicating to ordinary customers like you and I that their cost is going to go up. When you tax the services on Massey Foods, when you tax security from Massey Foods, when you tax the servicing of Massey computers, when you tax the transportation, when you tax everything, their accounting services, when you tax all the things that Massey needs as a business, you are also taxing the food that Massey sells. And so this has a domino effect. This is a compounded tax that is only going to make the cost of living situation in this country that much more worse. And that's the problem that we confront today. We confront a government that doesn't understand the economy. But Mama Flabo, bear with me, I must read you the letter from the NHC, lest they say that it's a fake document. I must read you a couple lines. And the document is dated the 19th of September, and it goes to all commercial tenants. It says, we are writing to inform you of an important change that will affect your lease agreement with the National Housing Corporation. The government of Saint Lucia has recently implemented a new health and citizens' security levy effective 2nd of August 2023. As a result, there will be a corresponding adjustment in your monthly rental amount before VAT. It's there. National Housing Corporation, the implementation date is the 1st of October 2023. Only in a matter of days, the tenants of the NHC will have to pay increased prices for renting from the National Housing Corporation. And that's what we have to confront in this country. That's why these tongue halls are so important. These tongue halls are important because as they mess up in this country, we have to mobilize ourselves, we have to march, we have to campaign, we have to make our voices sound loud so that we can be organized, so that when the next election comes, that the United Workers' Party, the Flabo train, will be sailing into the finish line of victory. That's why these tongue halls are so important. And so I want to congratulate you, the members of the United Workers' Party. I remember that after the 2021 defeat, it was very, very, very difficult for us. We saw our party demolished. And they thought that by a 15-2 victory, that they would bury us alive. But you know what, Mama Flabo? It didn't take WhatsApp groups like the Flabo Train and the Flabo War Room, it didn't take citizens from all over this country to mobilize themselves, to start their own talk shows, to keep hanging whatever semblance of yellow left on the roof. It didn't take you, the people of Shuizel, to say, look, this, don't blame me, I didn't vote Labour. It didn't take us long to ensure that we organize ourselves. And so the movement was started by you, the members of the United Workers' Party, and for that you deserve to give yourselves a round of applause. So we must go around this country. We must continue to make our voices sound loud. We must call out the hypocrisy of the Labour Party as they put a tax on bags, as they put a tax on shoes, as they put a tax on photocopying services. Could you imagine photocopying services? Your child needs to do an SBA, even that school assignment, the Labour Party is now taxing. Mama Flabo, is that correct? Is that fair? Is that right? They are putting a tax even on female hair, on wigs and weaves and braids. They are even taxing walking sticks. An old man that needs to aid his mobility to get a walking stick, the government is taxing a walking stick? This is how heartless they are. I remember that when they implemented VAT, they put the VAT on funerals, they were taxing even the dead. And it took a caring United Workers' Party government to come into government and remove the VAT on funeral, we reduce the rate of VAT because the rate of VAT at 15%, just like this 2.5%, was proving to be too high on the backs of the people of this country. And what we thought we had to do was to give you, the people of Saint Lucia, a bit of ease, to ease you from the pain that you were feeling. Because the United Workers' Party government understands that the way to tax yourself is to put on a tax when the economy is good. Right now, the economy for a lot of people is not good. The Labour Party has slowed down this economy from the good momentum they've had from the United Workers' Party. And look at how they have mismanaged the construction sector. Look at all the projects that they have stopped. And while the economy shows that we have had a rebound, it's basically just recovering from Covid. And so we haven't fully returned from the Covid lackluster economic performance. And so by coming now and implementing this tax is going to kill small businesses, is going to kill large businesses, is going to kill the momentum that the United Workers' Party left and started. And this is why this tax is so dangerous. So we've got to speak out. We've got to let Philip J. Pierre and the Labour Party knows that we are not impressed with their economic policy. We are not impressed by them stopping all of the projects which would have benefited the people of this country, all the projects that would have created jobs. We think of the shock housing project, we think of the Talvan housing project, we think of the Rodney Bay Road, we think of community centers all across Saint Lucia, we think of village tourism projects in Ancelore, village tourism projects right here in Shuizel, village tourism projects in Soufret, that they have stopped because these are projects started by the United Workers' Party. And so we cannot and we will not see this problem rectified until we remove this uncaring government, until we ensure that we go from constituency to constituency, from door to door, from neighbour to neighbour, and to say that a new day is coming, that the United Workers' Party is reorganizing itself, rebuilding itself, and getting stronger and stronger every day to take back this country from the failures of the Saint Lucia Labour Party. That's what we've got to do. We've got to make sure that we do this. Because if we allow them to stay, Saint Lucia, as Brian says, is going to get shorter, shorter than me. And we can't afford for Saint Lucia to get shorter than me. We need Saint Lucia to stand tall and we... And we must put back St. Lucia in the hands of a government with a vision, a government that cares, a government that knows what to do about cost of living. Look at what Flabo did while Covid was there. We didn't promise 1,500. We gave income support to 11,000 NIC employees. That's how you manage in a crisis. There were thousands of unregistered employees, taxi drivers, hairdressers, vendors who didn't have any NIC. But during the time of Covid, we never put on a 2.5% tax. We gave them income support. That's how you manage an economy in a crisis. We looked at our farming sector and we said to our farmers, look, that we know it's tough. We know that the hotels are not buying. We will give you support with seeds and with fertilizers. We'll give you subsidies so that you can produce, so that you can have a bit of a lifeline to survive. You mean to tell me that things are bad in the hotel industry? Things are low? We're seeing that there are zero cruise ships. We are seeing that hotel employees are on rotation. The taxi drivers don't have as much trips. And Philip J. Pear's solution to that is to put a 2.5% tax. This is how clueless he is as a manager of this economy. Philip J. Pear and the Labour Party are the worst economic managers the country has ever seen in the history of St. Lucia. And we must remove them. We must remove them with a government that has a plan, a government that can reconstruct and rebuild this country, a government that can take us into a promising future, a government that will care about all of our children, a government that will manage this cost of living situation better, a government that will manage crime better, a government that will manage the healthcare crisis better. That's what we need in St. Lucia. Mama Flabo, my, the, Brado has to speak. I don't want to take too much more time. Thank you and good night.
Thank you very much. That was our deputy political leader, Dominic Fede. Ladies and gentlemen, I understood that we are having town hall meetings. They are having town hall meetings too. I understand there was one in Denry North. And speaker after speaker, what message did they have? They were asking the people to protect the victory. Ladies and gentlemen, that is another way of saying to people, protect their jobs. They want to protect their jobs, just as Richard is brown-nosing Philip here to protect his job. The rest of the government is asking you to help them protect their jobs. But what about you? They were put there to see about you. They were put there to represent you. They are not interested in your plight. They are making your situation worse instead of putting you first and then turning around to tell you, protect their jobs. Well, here's what we have to protect. We have to protect our country. We have to protect our future. We have to protect our children. We have to protect the prosperity of this country, our economic prospects. We have to protect our safety and security. These are the things that we have to protect. And so when I asked the Prime Minister to fire the Minister of National Security because he was not doing a good job, I now hear how the Minister of Finance is performing and I ask that he be fired too. Then I saw my Prime Minister at the United Nations with Yebetu by Fini. But you see, I got a message a little earlier because I mentioned, um, in my previous, uh, short little address that Richard had moved from Pitbull to Mongrel. Now, I mean, Rick Wynn said it on Newsweek that people are getting on like mongrels. And we saw who was in the picture. Someone sent to me that in St. Lucia, there's another name for mongrels. They call them pampa terriers. So I asked, what does that mean? They say mongrels go around tiring dirty pampas. So they call them pampa terriers. So I was being corrected. So I was told that when you listen to Pitt, you swear that is a man that's still wearing pampas. And Richard is the one in his pampas. That is why Richard's nose is so brown. Newsflash, Mbaa, we go with Henry. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we talk about workers and the United Workers' Party is replete with men and women who are workers. I just want to pay tribute to Edmund Estefan as a former parliamentary representative of Denry South and the work that he has done. I mean, my passé Denry, le mme ve plain field Denry, mme jalouse. I mean, the work that was done, the roads, the development, daycare, you name it. We cannot stand here and go back and tell you all what we have done. It is too numerous to mention. But ladies and gentlemen, I mentioned this to let you know that normally when you employ someone, you look at their work history. If you look at their background, you know that you can repose your trust and confidence in the United Workers' Party because they are going to deliver. In 2011, after we had done a good job in putting St. Lucia on a level, Labour came and they told you all that they're gonna give you all better days. They gave you all bitter days. You brought back the United Workers' Party. After five years, I want to correct that. After three years, because Covid took away two of our years. Don't forget that. And very little could happen during that time. After three years, when you look at the work that was done by the United Workers' Party, Labour again came and they said to you, they will put you first. After only two years, you are realizing they have put you worse. So ladies and gentlemen, let's stop falling for the bluff. Let's stop allowing ourselves to be fooled. We will not be fooled by the St. Lucia Labour Party anymore. Because if you fool me once, shame on me. But if you allow them to fool you twice, shame on you. You can make a mistake once, although you should not if you were listening. But when you do it twice, a bad mistake is allowed to be taken. So let us correct our mistake and ensure that we do the right thing this time around. Next time, it's United Workers' Party. It's Flabo all the way. So ladies and gentlemen, as we move on, I just want you to know, you should not let your hearts be troubled despite the fact that our country is in trouble. Because every little thing is gonna be all right. With Flabo on the Labour Party's trail, with your support behind the United Workers' Party, every little thing is gonna be all right. I want to bring you two dynamic speakers. No, before I do that, y'all can wait. All right, before I do that, I will give you the man of the moment. I was talking about myself. Ladies and gentlemen, I am proud to have served in cabinet with this gentleman. Dominic and Herod told you the kind of representative he was. You saw for yourself the kind of representation that you got and you continue to get. You came here and you testified for yourself. I cannot come and tell you. You knew for yourself. You have a quality representative in Bradley Felix. You are going to continue to get quality representation from Bradley Felix. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call on your parliamentary representative, the honourable Bradley Felix, to address you at this time.
My Flabo! Bonsoir, tout Jean Flabo. Bonsoir, tout Jean Flabo, choiselle, salut, bis. Et bonsoir, tout Flabo et les autres qui accueillent nous à l'heure. Live la nuit. Bis naydiou, lani en chay yo gaga deh? En chay. Brothers and sisters, why am I standing here tonight as the parliamentary rep of Shozel Saldivus? You heard Mona Lynn earlier. And I can tell you, Mona Lynn was not prepared. She was not given any guidance as to what to say. She spoke from the heart. And there are hundreds of other examples in the community of Shozel who would come and do the same if they were asked to. I am here tonight as the parliamentary rep for Shozel Saldivus because of the faith, the trust and the love of the people of Shozel Saldivus. I am grateful and I am humble because of the daily outflows of love and support that I receive from the people of Shozel Saldivus. But brothers and sisters, tonight, I want to make something very clear. Truth be told, truth be told, brothers and sisters, there have been several conscious battles of where do I go from here? Several of them. But brothers and sisters, I can tell you that these battles are no more. These battles have been put to rest because when the people of Shozel Saldivus confront me, they look at me and they said to me, we put you here. You will stay here. And until we tell you to go, you're not leaving here. Brothers and sisters, with that kind of confidence repose in me by the Shozel Saldivus people, where am I going? The other thing, brothers and sisters, I want to make very clear here tonight. And that is why I'm very concerned because our Flabo people seem to be very fickle when it comes to making certain main decisions. If Bradley Felix ever, ever decides to cross a floor, put him in the center of Shozel and I will be the one saying crucify him, crucify him. Brothers and sisters, if you hear that passion that Mona Lynn spoke tonight and that I said to you, so many other people, how can I? I would have to run away from Shozel. And no place in St. Lucia would be safe for me because Shozel people reside everywhere in St. Lucia. I also want to take the opportunity tonight to thank the executive of the Shozel Saldivus constituency branch. You could see the hard work in bringing us what we are witnessing here today. And I can tell you something, they work with very, very little input from me. In fact, they will come and tell me, this is what we want you to do and I have to follow. So I want to thank them. I also want brothers and sisters to take a moment to thank the national executive of the United Workers' Party. I want to thank them for their mobilization. I want to thank them for the relentless pursuit of keeping St. Lucia of the sorry state of affairs. I want to thank them because, brothers and sisters, we are moving very fast and reckless downhill. Very fast. We are in trouble. I want to thank the national executive for accepting, and brothers and sisters, this is important, for accepting me and my difference in how I pursue my political path. Brothers and sisters, we are all different. We are all different. But as members and brothers and sisters of the United Workers' Party, we have one common foundation and that is to put the St. Lucia Labour Party government out of office. Too many times, too many times, I see us squabbling and fighting each other over petty, petty. We have to be able to put these differences aside, brothers and sisters, and come in our namesake, united for the cause of getting us out of the misery that we're in right now, brothers and sisters. This St. Lucia Labour Party administration never, never anticipated an opposition with a fighting spirit and tenacity as we're giving them right now. Because we continue to highlight the defamation and the propaganda and the deceptiveness that they continue to spread, brothers and sisters. And you know what, brothers and sisters? When they feel cornered, they attack you personally. And they attack your family. But we must never, never forget, united we stand, divided we fall, brothers and sisters. They try to rule us with scare tactics and intimidation. Brothers and sisters, our society can never be progressive when many people feel stifled with repercussions. Brothers and sisters, you hear me? No progressive society should ever be afraid to speak on what they believe is wrong. And you should be able to speak without having any fear of anybody coming and knocking your door and telling you, you're under arrest. Y'all know what I'm talking about. Brothers and sisters, we are in trouble. Oshaimoun! Oshaimoun kwe? Oshaimoun ka di mwen? Le mme alé akai parlament, meni bu bai plime pui. Sa pas style me. Ma ka bai me pui bu, bai me pui ba maasa. But brothers and sisters, when it's wrong, I will say it's wrong. And brothers and sisters, I am on the record. I am on record of saying that all governments must borrow. But you know what, brothers and sisters? We must borrow responsibly. And tonight, I will speak very briefly on St. Jude's because I know the brother Guy Joseph who's coming behind me. In fact, tonight I said to him, if he have to auction all them papers he have, he'll get to be a millionaire. He have a lot of information. So brothers and sisters, my point is the borrowing must make sense. The most recent travesty of borrowing over $200 million to fix an 80-year-old structure, brothers and sisters, that is a conversation that we need to keep relevant. That is really and truly insulting our intelligence as St. Lucia. A very good friend of mine, living just higher up the road, a young lady, I remember before the last election, she said to me that we will lose the elections because we did not finish St. Jude's. Brothers and sisters, we did not finish St. Jude's, I agree. But what we were doing, brothers and sisters, was to provide the kind of healthcare that our people deserve. You cannot tell me, and I must tell you, we have the information. we have the information, we have the documentation to show us that what we were doing was the right thing. We didn't just go on a women's fancy. And the information pointed that the old structure had too many flaws, too many things that would have to be corrected in the long term for us to continue with it, for the amount of money it would cost. We left a structure there that would have cost us anywhere between $50 and $60 million. And when we had finished, what we would have had would have been the envy of the Caribbean. Brothers and sisters, it means that the government is pumping away four times what it would have completed, that would have completed the new structure into an old structure. Money is that can do so much for us and we have heard the other speakers tell you about many of the things that we need. Brothers and sisters, it is a travesty and it is a travesty that I said, we need to keep that conversation relevant. We need to keep talking about it. We need to put it in the face every day, brothers and sisters, because that cannot be right, that cannot make sense. And brothers and sisters, what hurts me, what hurts me is the fact that so many people are quiet. Brothers and sisters, in a way, in a way, we have to feel for some of them because they are scared. They are scared. And again, I tell you, we cannot be living in a righteous society when people are scared to speak. Brothers and sisters, I was just telling my colleagues that after all what the experts from the Labour Party said that was wrong about what they termed to be the box. And we hear about boxes all over the world that are, you know, the finest hospitals. So they call it the box to try to degrade it. But brother, that was a box that was going to make us very proud, eh? Very, very proud. Only yesterday, I read an article by one of the experts who told the government, you know, that box, we're not using that box. You know what he said? He said people are misrepresenting what he said. He said he never said the box could not be used, but he said the box could not be used in isolation. We would have to use some of the other structures to complement. That is what we have been saying all along, brothers and sisters. The new structure would have been for the doctors and the patients to accommodate them and we would have the lunchroom in another place. We would have the laundry in another place, the mortuary in another place. We always said that, brothers and sisters. But now, you're going to pay $200 million. And mind you, they block it because they don't want us to see more walls will be breaking down. I understood there was a concrete cemetery. When we came in, we found out a concrete cemetery where they were burying a lot of concrete they had broken down. We have another concrete cemetery that we will be seeing, brothers and sisters. My brothers and sisters, my brothers and sisters, I want to speak very briefly again because it's Sunday, I know some of you have to travel very far on the 2.5% levy. Brothers and sisters, that 2.5%, as I said to people, I understand governments have to raise monies in different ways. The timing must be right. You cannot tell me, you recognise the hardships of our people at this point in time. You're not bringing on the price of fuel when the whole market fuel was dropping. You're not doing nothing to relieve the pressure of the people in the supermarkets. Nothing is being done to alleviate the pressures that the people are under, but you put a 2.5% on the people in this hard economic times and you say you're putting the people first. Brothers and sisters, make it make sense for me. The last UWP administration recognised the hardships of that. And that is why Honourable Alan Charsney said we will bring it down incrementally. We started with a 2.5. Had we been in office today, it would have been 10. You know what they did? They put it up and they say they care for the people. What people? Who do you care for? Brothers and sisters, we have not begun to see the suffering that our people will feel under that 2.5%. We have not begun to see it because many of the companies are struggling. They want, they recognise the hardships that Saint Lucians are facing and they are struggling. Can they continue by the end of the day? For companies, it's business, it's the bottom line. And who's going to pay for it? Me and you, all of us, Labour, Flambe, Tootmoon. Brothers and sisters, that is what we are going to be faced ahead of us. And I want to tell you, a little while ago, he said that the SLP government said that that 2.5% will not be applicable on food. Now that is why I tell you, there is no thought process in what's going on. How can it not be applicable on food when there are so many factors involved in the food? Either production or manufacturing of food. There is transport that you're going to charge a 2.5%. There's utilities, there's all kinds of things that are on the rise because of fuel prices and everything. The people will feel it! The people will feel it! You know, a little joke I want to share with you. Two days ago, I went up to Roblo and I collected some green fig from a family member of mine. I had the green fig and I was telling Black that yesterday. I had the green fig in my vehicle and I passed in the village and I called somebody, say, "Ou blé on, 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 tu as, up, up at, um, um, Figvet!" I spoke too loud. You should have seen the number of people that cover my vehicle. That's no joke, brothers and sisters. You would not believe the number of people who cover my vehicle for, for, for green... Epi tika. Brothers and sisters, I gave a family member a pad. You know what she said to me? "A tout ça m'a jamais barré, ou a jamais barré la vie où, ça a plime." That is how hard it is nowadays, brothers and sisters. Brothers and sisters, you would have heard from the speakers about various developments in the community of Shouzell Saldivus. And truth be told, maybe I'm wrong. I don't go about highlighting what I do. You know, because I always believe the people know, but I've been told that's not being politically savvy. But the people were aware, that is why they brought me back. Brothers and sisters, I just want to mention some of the things that, to me, are a lot more important than a lot of the concrete stuff that we do, we did, or I did in the community. Well, it's, it's, it's a team spirit because if the Prime Minister did not want to give me or did not give me the assistance, it would not have happened. So while I may have agitated for it, there was the backing of Cabinet for it. Brothers and sisters, there are things that I think that are very important in our community. And before I go there, I want to say one thing. I, the last time I was in Parliament, I said, "Just look at the difference in the two governments." And I spoke to $10 million being spent annually on schools versus $1 million when the Labour Party was in government. They jumped high and they said, "That is false representation because before, the monies used to go to the Ministry of Infrastructure and so that is what..." But brothers and sisters, if the money was going to the Ministry of Infrastructure for the school, where's the work that was being done? Because I can tell you, Shouzell has the most schools in Saint Lucia, in all the districts. And every single school in Shouzell, 10 of them, got significant, some of them got new toilet plants, significant work in, in, in the toilet facilities. You would not want to see what your children were using when they went to the washroom. We rehabilitated every single one of them, brothers and sisters. We provided new roofs, new ceilings, tiling, brothers and sisters. And the Labour Party said that before it was under Ministry of Infrastructure. Well, if it was, and I cannot speak to the other districts, they would have to confirm. If it was, then Shouzell was left out of that programme. If it was, brothers and sisters. But brothers and sisters, as I was saying, brothers and sisters, in the community, there are things that we did that we are waiting for the current government to take advantage of for the people. Brothers and sisters, we acquired what we considered to be the heartbeat of Shouzell, the sugar mills. These were in private hands. We acquired that because we believe that should be forever in the hands of the people of Shouzell. You would not hear people talking about that because it's not a concrete structure. But this is so important, brothers and sisters, to create green spaces for our people because we're losing a lot of places for people to recreate. And there were such tremendous plans we had for these two areas. I'm really hoping to see this government forget the politics and work on that. Brothers and sisters, the number of people who are living on government lands that we provided title to, significant empowering the people. Go to PI and ask the people. Go to them and ask them. And we had recently acquired land in La Puebla to give the people title. Many people have lands, houses on lands that do not belong to them. We acquired the Delce field and adjoining land so that we get to put various facilities for the people in Delce. Will this government continue with that project, brothers and sisters? Brothers and sisters, just a little higher up there, something we never had in Shouzell before. I provided funds for them to have built a music room. A music room, brothers and sisters. And I'm happy to see that it's going forward. Pitch students are very excited, taking advantage of another area that they can excel in. Brothers and sisters, water. Water, as they say, is life. And you would believe like a community or like Shouzell Saldivus, we would not have a problem with water. But we do have our challenges. Brothers and sisters, we invested over $250,000 in rehabilitating the 120,000 gallon tank in Delce for the farmers, brothers and sisters. The farmers can tell you that this is like green gold to them. We sent a proposal to the Basic Needs Trust Fund and I'm very happy to hear that it was approved. But for some reason, this government is delaying it, delaying it, delaying it. But they can delay, but it have to go, it have to come. Okay? To erect a 100,000 gallon tank in Victoria that will serve at least 14 communities. When the lady who went up against me, and that you have to take very seriously, le moun, kamute, yokadi, anything, she said when she gets into office, she will ensure that the Saldivus people no longer have a water problem. Yes, I beat her. But she's still in the Cabinet and she can fight for the people of Saldivus. If you care about people, regardless, you're in a position to fight for the people, to provide them with portable water. And brothers and sisters, when I take action on something, I don't just sit there and do it, you know? I went walking in the forest to identify a new source for the Saldivus people to create a dam. I walked down river, brothers and sisters. Look, the gentleman is there, he can tell you because they saw when I went up and I had two Asko people with me, okay? To look, to see where we could provide better water for the people because I can tell you where the water is coming from now in Saldivus, it's drying up. And the condition is not one that, you know, we, we, we want to continue or... So brothers and sisters, there are things that we have done that have not come to the fore. There are so many things that I did in this community that I don't go about saying that I did. But the government continues to fool us because I can tell you, during the summer vacation, we would provide to Shouzell $125,000 to clean the entire constituency of Shouzell. They look at me and they give me $30,000 and they expect me to do the same thing. And he goes and boasts and say, "Y'all were not given, but we give you something." So brothers and sisters, when, and, and I know the Prime Minister, the Prime Minister, the leader of the opposition made it very clear, be very wary of the half-truths. The half-truths. So they tell you something and say, "But they say they're giving you." Is what they're giving me? But I can tell you, brothers and sisters, when we were in office, the opposition constituencies got the same amount of money I was getting to clean the communities. It may not have gone to the parliamentary rep because as I said to them, "I don't care if y'all give me the money, clean the community." It's the community I care about. And if you care about this community, you will take care of this community. We had a strong road programme in place for Shouzell Saldivus. Strong road programme. I see the state of the Roblo Montet, um, Lamaz Road right now. If you drive there, you would ask yourself what is going on. I see the state, I, 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 I'm here, I'd mention it, when you go through Ravino, Guaden, you know, um, um, and come out industry, going down into La Puebla. The state of that road, brothers and sisters. Monsion. Brothers and sisters, you care about people and that is what you're putting people through? But brothers and sisters, I can tell you one thing. The avalanche that will be coming down to vote this government out, despite, despite the quiet voices, there is a saying, that is when poupl eat up your roof, you know it? Because poupl does work quiet, quiet, quiet. When you see the next election is called, all fall down. And why I'm telling you that, brothers and sisters? Why I'm telling you that? And as I, again, you know, I, I went, I was out of stage for a little while and you know what they say, Bradley Abundance, Bradley? One Parliament session I go to, they say Bradley defecting. Because I have not been at some of the community meetings, they say, "Where Bradley pay?" Yo, brothers and sisters, everything has a reason for it. But brothers and sisters, I can tell you, whenever I travel, I try to meet up with fellow Saint Lucians. And recently, I, I was in the US, I was in Brooklyn and I met with some Saint Lucians. And this is the first, and I've been in politics before and where I congregate with people and they don't talk politics. This is the first time that group was so strong on the politics. And you know what they said to me? Whenever elections is called, we taking that flight and we coming along to put this government out. That is the strong will because they're embarrassed by where we are on the whole stage now. So brothers and sisters, I am telling you, if you look at the numbers, if you look at the figures, you will see that a great percentage of people stayed away from the polls. A great number of people stayed away from the polls. For whatever reason, maybe the beautiful language of the Labour Party got to them. Some of them were not sure what was being, and we have to take some blame for that. We have to take some blame because we thought that Saint Lucians would see through the bluff. We have, we must never take things for granted again. And that is why we are responding the way we responding now. And you can see our town hall meetings are growing stronger and stronger and stronger. Don't be surprised of various things that might happen to try to prevent our continuation of our town hall meetings. Because when you see a man is cornered and he's scared, anything, anything. That is how we have this current Labour Party administration. They backs against the wall because they rec, we recognise that the decisions they are making are not in the interest of our country. We are speaking out against it and they would rather us stay quiet, brothers and sisters. So brothers and sisters, I see the, the man of the time has indicated to me that my time is up. We will be hearing a lot more of me. You will be seeing a lot more of me, brothers and sisters. And I don't care who they send against me. The love, the faith... The love, the faith and the trust that the people of Shuazel has disposed in me will continue. And whoever you send, back to the boundary. So brothers and sisters, I thank you and have a good night. Yes, ladies and gentlemen, you'll be hearing a lot more of him. You'll be seeing a lot more of him. And I'm telling you, you'll be getting a lot more of him. A round of applause, the Honorable Bradley Felix, Parliamentary Representative for Shuazel Saltebus. Now, I listen attentively when people speak. I remember not too long ago, Bradley said to me, I'll be out of the island. Sometime ago, not too long ago, around Liberty, the Chairman Terrell Pruden said to me, I'll be out of the island. The political leader not too long ago said to me, I'll be out of the island. Only to find out, all of them went to the United States, no fanfare, no big deal, nothing. They don't even mention that it's the United States again. So why some people making such a song and dance? Because they go, I mean, ladies and gentlemen, we are not here for fanfare. We are not here to put on a show. We are workers. And that is why you can with confidence repose your trust and the future of your country in the hands of the United Workers' Party. Now, it is getting a little late, so we're going to move right along. You know what? Considering now it's getting late, I'm going to give you two in one. I giving you two in one. I want to bring you two of our firebrands. Two of our dynamic speakers at the same time. You can handle that? All right. After Bradley, Dominic, Harold and the local speakers, and I must say your local speakers, a round of applause to them. It's time to wake up. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to bring to the podium all at once Mrs. Nancy Charles, our Mobilization Officer. And if that is not enough, the right guy, the Deputy Political Leader of the United Workers' Party, Guy Joseph. Both of them will address you. They will debunk some of the propaganda that you've been hearing. In disguise, we'll unmask them. Ladies and gentlemen, a round of applause for Nancy Charles. Are we ready?
You say you're ready?
All right, now, before I go into my speech and deal with, I will allow Nancy to raise an issue that we need to deal with. And let me tell you something. So once you see I put on my glasses, labor is in trouble.
So, Mama Flabo. Now you remember what happened just about two weeks ago? And because we came out and we debunked it and we gave you the truth, that didn't go anywhere, right? So we have another matter. So we have a letter or post that was posted on Facebook by a gentleman.
He started with a scripture.
Okay, so his scripture was about King Solomon. So maybe the person that called me and tell me he's a pastor, maybe they're right. I don't know, I stand corrected. But we're talking about a gentleman called John Peters. So, what I want to do tonight, very briefly, before the gentleman, before Honorable Guy Joseph. I see. He spoke about St. Jude's and he made a number of statements. But I want you to listen to the answers to some of those statements because it is important for you, our members and our supporters, because you did the work with the Panama issue. When we gave you the information, you did it. You spread it, you shared it, you spoke about it and you debunked the Labour Party. And so we giving you a job, starting from last time tonight and continuing. You need to do this. So, Guy, John Peters spoke about the report and there are a number of things that he made mention. But I first want to remind our people, before that, do you remember he made a statement on HTS in 2017 with reference to St. Jude's? Can you tell the audience, maybe, what is it that John Peters said about St. Jude's? That's before the report. That's after we did the FDL report. What did he say?
So Nancy, even maybe before we go there, can we just say what he said about the Bible? Because when you see men use the Bible. I have been a Christian, but I'm a politician. And you will not hear me bring my Christianity into my politics.
That's right.
I don't use God for my personal reasons. If I'm a Christian, you will know and you will see by what I do. So he said some things about wisdom. I think we need to understand what wisdom is.
So let me read it for you. He said, "King Solomon is one, in one of his wise saying, once said, 'Do not answer a fool according to his folly lest you be like him.' Answer a fool according to his folly lest he be wise in his own eyes.' That was his quote on King Solomon.
So let me tell him something. Proverbs 78:28 says, "Even a fool who keeps silent is considered wise when his lips are closed. He is deemed intelligent." And that is for John Peters. So let's go to what he said, Nancy, now.
So, after he said all of that, he spoke about what he heard on Newspeak and Newsmaker Live and some of the criticisms. He said, "It is time that there be a presentation of the factual matters concerning the report of the Evaluation Committee on St. Jude's, which I signed off on." So what he's saying, you all remember, Philip J. Pierre put a committee of friends, families, neighbors and other people together. John Peters was part of that committee. And so he said, "As shocking as this may sound, the report never stated that the government should go back to the Phase 1 of the hospital." Is that true?
Hold on, Nancy. So this is what he said on March 11, 2017, on the HTS news, which was to your first question. "What has happened at St. Jude is a disgrace. It is the worst that I have ever seen in my 34 years of engineering in terms of contract administration. It is a mess of Herculean, as it says, proportions. It was sad as a professional engineer reading such a document and to see how state funds had been so wasted. It was really difficult to read the document and to see the level of maladministration as it were in terms of how you should run a project and run a contract." So that was a bit, that was a bit sad one, I must say. And it, it really goes to the issue of accountability. And let me tell you, the only person in the administration of governance in this country who a commission of inquiry has been found guilty of maladministration is Kenny Anthony. And that is in the Sarum Sahoy report. Now, I don't tell you stories, you know. I have the report here. And if the media want to verify what I'm saying, my Richard, I not reading half of a piece of paper.
That's right.
What I tell you is in the commission of inquiry. Now Nancy, to answer your question, I have one thing to say to John Peters. Do not lie to the people of San Lucia. Because the same Bible you quote says, "A man who speaks lies, even his prayers is an abomination unto God." You never saw that in the scriptures, John Peters? Now, what did he say, Nancy?
He said that he never recommended that the government should go back to the Phase 1 of the hospital. Now Phase 1 is the 80-year-old structure.
How it disappeared? No, I have it, don't worry. I have it.
Okay.
Okay. Now you know, once I put on my glasses, I de ma ti.
All right.
And I want to show you. It is the St. Jude report. It is dated October 20th, 2021. It's not Flabo that was in office. Now what did John Peters say, Nancy?
He said, "He never stated that the government should go back to the Phase 1 of the hospital."
So, on page 30 of the 52-page report, on the section 10.3.3, "Transition Plan, 18 Months", it says, "Given the dire situation which currently exists at the George Odlam National Stadium, the matter of completion and commissioning of St. Jude should be treated as an emergency and should commence without delay to complete and operationalize the entire Phase 1 to facilitate its occupation and transition from the George Odlam National Stadium." This is your signature on this report. You said in your post, and you using Wise Man Solomon.
The Bible.
You using the Bible, the inspired word of God to come and lie to the people of San Lucia by posting something. And I have the report here, my. Now Nancy, before this says me that same idea.
Let me verify that. I need to verify that.
10.3.3.
"Given the dire situation which currently exists at the George Odlam National Stadium." So I have to read, right? "The matter of the completion and the commissioning of the St. Jude's Hospital should be treated as an emergency and should commence without delay to complete and operationalize the entire Phase 1 to facilitate its occupation." Line number one debunked.
Now Nancy, if part of the document is a lie, the rest of the document is a lie. I don't need to respond to anything else that John Peters has said. Because you cannot write something in a report. You know, you call yourself a professional engineer for 34 years. And you have to come and lie to the people of San Lucia to tell them your report never said to go to the old St. Jude. When you say 18 months that old St. Jude should be completed and you are specific in saying the entire Phase 1. Phase 1 is the old St. Jude. Phase 2 is what they call the box that we were building. Now, thank you, Nancy.
That's it?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, let's go down to our own business. Now you see I occupied the whole table, so I'll be turning now and then. Let's look at this thing. You saw Silas was on an interview on, is it NTN? Explaining what they are doing at St. Jude. Now tell them, Flabo knows what is going on in this country. So you know what they have done? You know which two buildings they are working on? The two buildings of the box. The same box they tell you, that's not good. And I can tell you, we created a walkway from the physiotherapy under dialysis building to go into the main hospital. You know what they have done? Don't mind them, they're trying to work in secret, but we know what is happening. So they have gone in and they have put blocks to separate the two buildings, the physiotherapy and the dialysis building from being able to access the new building which was going to house the hospital. Now San Lucians, I'm not telling you a story. I challenged the Labour Party tonight to allow a team of reporters to go down to St. Jude tomorrow. Morning. Do not break the wall and go, because I said that tonight. You know you have put in a wall to prevent access. But these men are so clueless. And that is why John Peters, where is Mr. Heinicat who was advising them? Isn't he an architect? You know what has happened? They did not understand what was happening. So as we were using, and Bradley highlighted and other persons have, that what was happening is that we were using part of the buildings of the old St. Jude and we have been explaining that, but not to house patients because the design is not suitable to put in patients. So we were going to put the administrative office, we were going to put the kitchen where they cooking the food, we were going to have the laundry and these things. So that part of the money that had been spent on St. Jude would not go to waste. The people who had contributed, the schoolchildren, the donors from other countries. We have not abandoned the old St. Jude. We were using it for what it was suited for. So what they have done now, because what happened with them is that they go and block the entrance to the new hospital, but there's no way to connect physiotherapy and dialysis to the old west wing of the hospital. So that means you have to go outside one section of the hospital to go inside the other. one section of the hospital to go inside the other section of the hospital. Now, why is work going on there? And they're not telling us who has the contract and how much they have the contract for? And didn't Philip J. P. S. A. he, "It will not be like what we did, it will go out to tender"? So I want to ask the contractors in Shorzel, the contractors in Viewford and Soufre and Mekud. Did anybody get a tender document to tender on the works that are going on at St Jude as I speak? You see, people, we can have emotional discussions. But health is more important than politics. The saving of the life of one St Lucian is more important than this meeting the United Workers' Party is having in Shorzel tonight. The saving of the life of one St Lucian is more important than any meeting that the Parliament of St Lucia has. Nobody can give back life. If we lose money, we can work and we can make back money. If our vehicle write off, we can buy another vehicle. When our loved one dies because of poor healthcare in this country, there's nothing we can do about it. And I will show you how wicked this Labour Government is for going back and work on the old St Jude. And it's not my words, you know, it will be their words. Because at the end of the day, it's not what I say. It's not what Philip J. P. A. come and lied to you about or Ernest Hillyon Stevenson King. It is what is in the manifesto of the St Lucia Labour Party. And I will run through a few of them with you. And when I get to St Jude, you will understand. So I have to put on my glasses again. on page 12 of the manifesto. Page 12 of the manifesto, here's what they say. "We shall implement..." I want to read it for you so, so you can see. "...continue plans for a cruise port in Viewford and the enhancement of the Castries Port." That is number four on page 12 of the St Lucia Labour Party Manifesto of 2021. Even the manifesto is a lie. Because if they said, what, what did they say they were going to do? Continue a cruise port in Viewford. What is the agreement they signed with GPH for Viewford? They sign an agreement to develop the port in Castries and to put Viewford on hold for the next 40 years. But that is not what's in the manifesto. When the people of St Lucia asked for the agreement, didn't the government say they will make the agreement available? Where is it? So you see, I am using their own words to show you how much they lie and they bluff the people of St Lucia. On page 15 of the manifesto. Watan Bradley dikapala about apat fig. And god, there's a page 15 asu manifesto addi. "The banana sector, as a result of the collapse of Winfresh, the once marketing arm of the banana industry, the industry has become severely compromised. A St Lucia Labour Party government will make the necessary interventions to bring stability back to the banana farmers and to their families by undertaking to do the following: Set up a task force to meet immediately with fives under supermarkets with a view of re-establishing a marketing presence for bananas and other crop produces. Seek to explore regional markets for our bananas." Esuka hen fig setli si ho dia. So if there, if we cannot even supply bananas for St Lucia, how you exporting bananas? The people of St Lucia, we like to be fooled. We like people to tell us lies. And we believe the lies and we reject the truth. Now Joshua say ipa koha. The only two sets of people in St Lucia we can remove from this bracket is Mekud South and Shorzel Saltebus. All the rest drank the Kool-Aid of the St Lucia Labour Party. Matar sujuk ba ki o di me, oh nu buzong viye, me di hot fire me, ek hot blae me viye. You see, at the end of the day, how many times does the Labour Party have to lie to us to know that we cannot trust them and we cannot believe them? When they promise you jobs, jobs and more jobs? They ask Kenny, "What is the first priority of your government?" He said, "Jobs." They ask him the second priority, he said, "Jobs." They ask him the third priority, he said, "Jobs." And unemployment went to the highest it had ever been in St Lucia. 25% overall and 44% among the youth. And in five years of Alan Shastner, unemployment had gone down to 16%. The people voted us out, ek yo vot mi se asukot yo. Philip J. P. A. went to New York and in addressing St Lucians, he there talking about Obamacare. Somebody had to tell him, "Philip, it's not Obamacare we have in America, we have Medicare." Well, what we have in St Lucia is Philip E. Care. America can talk about Obamacare and Medicare, but in St Lucia, Labour Party E. Care. That's the only care we have, they don't care. You understand? That is what we have for a government of the St Lucia Labour Party. Now land pliba ayam manifesto yo tuju. Tansaa. You see, on page 21, on page 21, what did they say? For early childhood education, every child will get access. And I can tell you, in Castries Southeast, the rep now promised that every child would be able to go to preschool free of charge. You know how many preschools close in the community already? Because parents have no money to be able to pay preschool for their children. By word, St Lucia is in trouble. Our little children cannot even attend preschool because the parents cannot afford to pay preschool for them. Go to the Labour Party manifesto. Se pa mu eki di yo. Yo ki di, milila, early childhood education for all. I want to ask you, how are you coping, parents? So many single parents in this country. So many parents who depended upon a little job that was being created by the United Workers' Party. What has happened to us? Now, that is, on page 23, it talks about to consider the viability of SAFA as a university that started under the United Workers' Party. Under Dr Gail Rigobert as the Minister of Education. What has happened? They're now going and do a study to see if it's viable to make SAFA into a university when under United Workers' Party, you could already acquire degrees from SAFA? Who is for St Lucia? So we can talk cheap politics. We can tell you the things you want to hear for you to vote for us. You know I am proud of the United Workers' Party? Because none of the men and women of UWP will promise you things to win elections. They promise you only what we know we can deliver. We underpromise and we overdeliver. Labour Party, they promise and promise and never deliver. That's why we are in so much labour pains in this country. Now the point I want to get here. It's on page 24 of the manifesto. Climate resilient housing. Now that is where I'm going to tie in St Jude to my discussion. Did you hear what I said? Climate resilient housing. So, so what does? Let, let's, let's pause a moment and look at that. I want you to understand, I'm not telling you stories. Page 24, housing. "As a social good, affordable quality housing will be a priority for the St Lucia Labour Party government. The inadequacy of housing stock, especially among the low and middle income families, will be adequately addressed by a Labour Government in addition to government increasing the housing stock for the group of citizens. Greater access to land will be made to that group at an affordable price. And in the end, Labour Government will commit to the following." Now here what they say. Remove the current property tax on residential buildings. Have they removed the tax on your buildings? For five years, under Alan Shastner and the United Workers' Party, you had no property tax to pay. Waime koda ku ek fuetan dou, wa vot by Labour. Pu sa Flabote hati alau, Labour New York I T A. Uba mem realise Flabote hati a. What is wrong with us? Okay? I mean, these fellows are masters of deception. And like Spider said, the pit bull turn to a mongrel. Now, the worst thing that can happen to a big man is for him not to be in charge of himself. When you somewhere and you don't feel that you belong and you know you are not wanted, you have to lick the floor. You have to lick all kind of places for people to want to accept you. And they still will not accept you because after all your licking, they'll still kick you out. So I feel sorry for Richard Frederick. I don't wish to be in his position. I go to America when I want, I come back when I want. Le ma aleho pa mem saf kon Spider diho, le nuviye. I was just in New York for the fundraiser for the United Workers' Party. I didn't make a big fuss about that. At the end of the day. Nyongjuwa fe la mewi, la mewi telma bon, ra web flag la mewi, ro haven flag setli si. I mean, when you see big men doing nonsense with themselves, lying to the people of St Lucia, and we believe them. Engage the citizens in the process of consultation where they would prefer to live in relation to their place of employment and key services and to inform the planning and locating of housing development. You going to go and ask people where they want to live in, in relation to their employment? But there's no employment in the country? So the first thing you have to do is create employment. Then you will ask people where they want to live. Now, Alan Shastner had a plan under United Workers' Party for the south of the island. Se buglata nuka fe horse racing track, yo fly fe a bye bubuik. Is not donkey race we said we have in. The United Workers' Party believes in world class. Mem si otame ne buik, so monstrat. Today, today, you live in a world class. Now, you see follow fashion make the donkey lost it still. You all heard UWP have horse race. For heaven's sake, there's a horse racing track. Hotbi se laha gouvern maki fe, ebey ipwey from teo, ek fe res lala. It is our passport money because they lied to you when they told you it was horses before hospital. So esyo hakuma se St Jude. Esyo ha meo wa di da St Jude. So now it's donkeys before hospital? It's not horses before hospital? Because race track la yo ka fe la, shuval ba is ak uya le sa. Se, se buik, ekla pa mem ni buik setli si ako. Now I want to go. I want to say to you that Labour Party has been doing things to us for the longest while. And we allow them to get away. Because what we are seeing here, it says, "Integrate land use planning strategies into the development of climate resilient housing." That is point number three. What kind of housing did I say? Climate resilient housing. Now, I may manifesto yo ate abesa. And let's talk about St Jude now. So you going and build climate resilient housing for people to live in? And we build a climate resilient hospital? You abandon it and you going to a makeshift hospital? my parents send me to school and I went to school from Monday to Friday. Mile kol ledi mash ek le samdi. I went to school and I learned something. And I'm saying to us, even if we did not have a formal education, but we have common sense. How can a government tell you they are going to build climate resilient housing? To put people, a dozen people, four people in a family, three people, sometimes two people, they need climate resilient housing. But a hospital that is going to... But a hospital that is going to have 90 beds and hundreds of people at any one time, you do not want a climate resilient hospital for the south of the island? Ek hotja pa wesisi ya. Hot lakomumu. Hot pa adi ayeh. We need to stop what the St. Lucia Labour Party is doing in the south of this country. It cannot be right. It cannot be right. Because I was having a conversation with a gentleman yesterday evening and I said to him, the, we can expect if we don't get a hurricane this year. Do you think in the next 20 or 25 years, we might get hit by a major hurricane in St. Lucia? Is that a possibility? So why would you go to a hospital and 20 years from now, a major hurricane pass and it blow up the whole roof of the hospital? Where you putting the patients? Ko ukai me se pesenla. The hospital that was being built by the United Workers Party, pierce hurricane pa hapwe rufla. So the world has taught us through climate change. And you remember when they had Jimmy Fletcher representing us at Cup 2022? No, Cup 20. When he was there, what happened? They said the temperature is going to change and because of global warming, the intensity of hurricanes will be much more than what it used to be. In fact, we had three major storms. One in a hundred years, we had three in 20 years. Debbie, Thomas and the Christmas Eve Trophy. So it is obvious that climate change is having an impact. Why would we not build a hospital that is climate resilient? And that is what Alan Chasney was doing. So labour can go and spend the $200 million on the old hospital and I know for a fact that yote hatiye rufla tuaku meyate ekvie meyalé ek yosevi adamemse vie matuiya. Somosamse matuiosa hafeb. Some of it is stomach infested and it is already mold infested in that old building. You going and take $200 million loan. Now let me tell you, at 2% on 200 million, that is $4 million a year in interest. And if you multiply it by 20 years, which is the repayment, that is 80 million. And if it's under reducing balance, we have a banker eh? Bradley, on the reducing balance, it will be a little less, but not that much less. So let's say it's 50 million we going to pay in interest. Avou fin pe elonsa pu lopitala. Si yo' hurricane passe, i kwa se lopitala. Unbu vie ai bati, alot lopital. Udi me nu me munki kuyon ko in charge of a pay? How can we have that level of ignorance among people representing a country? And they say no organisation rises above its leader. So if pier is the benchmark, well nu fini set li si. Si se pier ki misinu, ki hotenuka ivé ebey balfini vie loa sah set li si. Bugla pasapa langle, ipasa palipatoa. Ipapale pier slangas. Ipakut, ipaho, ipa pier scoti. We have an invisible Prime Minister in this country. He said, what did he say when they tell him about the high prices? He said, inflation is important. So tell me which other country introduce a levy of 2.5% on their people? Now, when I was here posh me. I went and buy a tank, a 100 pound cylinder on Friday. Pier mesabu panchuizin, uba bui mahe. So pa ige gias. Ukopan, ubaya supermarket. Uba amahe pi se chizi zukamahe. Okay? Now we can laugh at these things, but this is what the Prime Minister said. That's the same Prime Minister who said St. Lucia is in Europe. And when the McNichens put an advisory on a city perhaps sa. I bought a tank at 20 pounds, a 100 pound cylinder for $114. 100, no, 314.55. So I asked the gentleman who was selling to me, how much is a 20 pound cylinder? He tell me 39 dollars and something. So I say, okay, so let's round it off to 40 dollars. So if my maths is right, 5 twenties is 100. 5 forties is 200. So why am I paying 314.55 for 100 pound cylinder when I can go and buy five small tanks, which is the same amount of gas and pay only 200 dollars? He tell me, ask the government. Now, I want you to understand what I'm saying. So let's say, they say they subsidizing. So let's increase the price to 50 dollars. The five tanks at 50 dollars will still be 250 dollars. So lot 65 dollars, my 55 cents la, koi ka ali. Where is it going to? You see, that is what we, the people of St. Lucia must understand. Now I speaking to the little people who have their little restaurant and their fast food places. You cannot be cooking on a 20 pound cylinder. Avou wi de shodie sahasek. So you have to buy a 100 pound cylinder. But you know what? Most people are resorting to going back and buy 20 pound cylinder. Now, all of us who are in business know, when you buy wholesale, when you buy bigger quantity, the price supposed to be lower. How we buy bigger quantity and the price is higher under the St. Lucia Labour Party? Weh, se yo ukai buma desa, i se pa amwe. So you see, that is why they have lied so much to you about St. Jude. The only buildings that have approval is the approval that we got for the section of St. Jude that we were building. Silas is down there working. He have a new programme. So, on page 12 of the report of 2021, Stevenson King said that the hospital would be a six months project. Did you hear me? In 2011, Stevenson King said a six months project. Hodia komela neyani. Kenny Anthony came and he told us for 60 million dollars, we will have a state of the art hospital. And she and he and Alvinah gave us free debt for the opening of St. Jude, St. Jude boife. Bon Philip J. Pierre di nu ko ha. No, I buy hotly. SLP statement, 10 September 2019. SLP says, current government abandoned completion of St. Jude. And on a paragraph below, it says, that was a press release. Further, the hospital which was six months away from completing could have been finished with the loan funds of 20 million US that was, that was made available by the Republic of China on Taiwan and partially drawn down. Philip J. Pierre said in 2019 that 27 million dollars and six months would finish the old St. Jude. Why are they now borrowing 200 million? And they are saying it is going to take 18 months to finish St. Jude. People of St. Lucia, I can talk, I can say what I want, but the facts speak for itself. They have hired and while John Peters is at it, I want to ask him, what was his path in selling the land at Bonnann as deputy chair of the NHC for Renault's daughter below market price? And now, mi kipala ko se uki chairman, wepon sa. Now, today, I have the picture on my phone. There was a badge at Bonnann's and those of you who came from the north coming down would have seen the badge there. Now let me tell St. Lucian something. You know how much a yard of the white sand cost us in castries these days? 200 dollars. Why is it 200 dollars? Because they are not allowing the boat that is bringing in the sand to offload in castries. It is only allowed to offload in the south. So by the time you buy the sun and you transport it to castries, that is what. So what you think is going to happen? People will go to the beach and start doing sand mining again. But what they are trying to do is to create a monopoly for Renault. So Leonke is amenesab atwe castry. Because it is not the badge that is bringing the sun. The badge could offload in cul-de-sac. But it is those boats that it's inside the hull. That is where they put the sun. And so you need a deep water harbor for it to be able to offload. Why couldn't Slasper have developed a place in Bonnann so that all the other persons importing sand into St. Lucia could get access, pay Slasper the money? So, si se Renault pu ai pe pu offload badula, ekikachadua pu kitwapo to run you out of business? That is what is happening to our St. Lucia. But you all were fooled. When they tell you friends, family and foreigners, who is Pierce in the Ministry of Economic Development today? You send a man who is younger on retirement and more qualified and you bring a man who is older and less qualified because he's earnest, he less brother? So, tonight, St. Lucians, I have said to us, politicians can talk, but you can examine the facts for yourself. The discussion is not over. The truth must be told and you blamed us. You told us, we did not tell you what was happening. Well, that is what we are doing now. We are opening your eyes. People say government need money. Guvadma buswela hapasew? Se munna ki kai dormi, sawi pa manchea. Ukuwe pier ka, if pier goes to bed hungry is by choice. But I know there are mothers in this country and I know there are fathers. There are men in this country who feel that they have been castrated because financially they cannot provide for their family. And nothing is harder for a man than to see his children going to bed hungry and as a man in the house, he cannot provide bread for his children because bread is so expensive under a St. Lucia Labour Party that parents cannot even buy bread. So in closing tonight, I cannot close without speaking about my friend Bradley Felix. I'm proud of Bradley. I'm proud of what Bradley has done in Shorzel. Let me tell you something. When a man does not want to be a politician, he becomes the best representative. And most of the men and women on this side, we didn't fight to be in politics. Ute we latenion, yo fe dezagwe ma pa miyo leofini ai fe dilambatab, kutra ivan sitla. But Bradley bo pasiyo, ek jashwazeni, please e fel pasiyo. So I'm saying to us, look at achievements and accomplishments. They talk about what I did, I still lost. Herod did more. Herod still paid. Este, laugade denri denri sa realville now. We still lost. God knows best. I don't question what destiny brings. But I want to say to us, when we make mistakes, we suffer the consequences of the mistakes. Labour Party spent 100 million dollars on a 44 million dollars road and they left you a single lane bridge. It had to take Bradley Felix under United Workers Party. And when I pass there, me force poa bel, me di mesier. Bradley me jalou epon sa. Herod have a nice bridge in Soufren and Bradley has a wonderful bridge in Shorzel. Now, now, let's talk, let's talk. Kenny so Pak Estet. Koi leve. Leite mute Saltebis and 20... No, 1997. And we had a swing in Saltebus against the United Workers Party because everybody said Kenny was from the area and this and that. You know what? Kenny pa fa hiye, by Jean Saltebis. It had to take Bradley Felix to come and fix the road in Pak Estet. And I was there with him and I know between Labour Party, Stevenson King and Richard Frederick, we had lost all the land down in Balambush. You know, under United Workers Party, we were able to get back the land. It cost us 6 million dollars. Yo ai fa deal, Labour Party ai fa deal ek bo panela kompanile gliter. Gave them 51% of the land without them paying one cent. Ek layai lo dias, nu ped kesla. Because shitoli toava ek yo wifize pe shitoli. Ek si otendu pe shitoli, laje yo kai pe la pat kai memvin 2 million dollars. The court awarded him 6 million dollars between his work and interest. And it had to take a UWP government to pay it to secure that land back for the people of St. Lucia. And that was the work of Bradley Felix. Two community centres, Wobllo and Piay. Look at the, yo pe uve, because layai uve, say Bradley in Bula. The Shorzel Secondary School, you remember how long it? The Shorzel Secondary School, you remember how long it was there? And it could not be done. And when I remember when we had that meeting in Shorzel and Bradley said, "That's one of the first projects he's going to do." Because the lives of the children, these buildings had been unsafe. They were not climate resilient buildings. But under Bradley Felix, climate resilient buildings were put to house the children of Shorzel. That is what representation is all about. That is what, when you elect a real man to represent you, that is what he does. Bradley may not be flamboyant on the platform. "Se pa tut mun gixapale meman ye." But what you need is a worker. And under the United Workers' Party, what we have, we are workers. And our work speaks for itself. Don't mind we lost elections. Nobody, no other government in St. Lucia in recent history has accomplished more than the Alan Chasney government achieved in five years. And you're right, three years because delané covid. Covid malmenenou. Imalmenes et li si. It shut down the whole world. But St. Lucia survived under the United Workers' Party. And we did not make excuses. We delivered on the projects. And we had so much more to do for you. Viewfort was going to be an international city. Now, when you put a Mickey Mouse government in place, what do you expect to get? You live on an international horse racing track, what you going to? "Ukaifa res abai pou kusbuik." We were building a first-class airport. Pierre di pa jeme wo airport upstairs and downstairs. "Kwa prime minister pe di betis konha." "Até Saint-Vincent ni upstairs and downstairs airport." Right there in Saint-Vincent, next door. So now that that is, so they scaled down the size. We were giving you a world-class hospital. What has Labour Party done? They scaled it down. So Pierre is suffering from short man syndrome. He cutting short everything that UWP was doing. Now, I have hope for St. Lucia. We are in trouble under this Labour Party. We need all our soldiers. We need all independents. We need all labors who are feeling the squeeze under the government to switch over and come to the United Workers' Party so that our rescue mission can be achieved before three years. We cannot survive three years under this government. So I challenge you, as we build momentum at our town hall meetings, we only present facts, figures, and the truth to you. And as we close tonight, I want to assure you, this United Workers' Party is on the march to victory. And we want all St. Lucians to be with us when we form the next government of St. Lucia. I thank you, good night, and God bless you.
Thank you, thank you Guy, thank you Nancy. "Le f Guy fin palé, ki sa mo sa di." Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, I know it is late. I want to thank you so much and tell you how much we appreciate your support. We appreciate the fact that you came out here today in your numbers to give us the support. I want to take a moment to thank the people in the diaspora who I know were following us live. I want to thank the other St. Lucians around the island who have been following us live. We went past one thousand viewers on Facebook and we were over six hundred viewers on YouTube. And of course, very importantly, those of you actually took the time on your Sunday evening to come here to be with us, we are grateful and we thank you. Continue to support your party. By so doing, you are looking after the interests of your country. Your country is in trouble and your country needs you now more than ever. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to inform you rather that our next town hall meeting, because we are having them around the island, throughout the island, all over the island, the next town hall meeting is next Sunday and it's going to be at the Bellev HRDC. So tune in and the people of Viewfort North, please come out in your numbers to support. I want to once again thank you, wish you a very good night, and get home safely.